I didn't realize how dependent I was on that clock.
Don't be.
I know.
It's consistent but inaccurate.
(laughing).
Try twice a day.
All right, let's start. All right, welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is August 27, 2019. We're airing on Comcast, Channel 22, and Verizon, Channel 23. On tonight's agenda, we'll have liaison reports followed by town manager report, public comment. We'll then be appointing an RMLD CAD member. We're going to be voting to approve space for temporary lighting at Birch Meadow while Turf 2 is under repair. We'll have a brief discussion on the police chief hiring process. Then we will continue a hearing on Bay State liquor for alleged violations of selling to minors. We will vote to approve an Austin prep drainage project and a monitoring agent for 475 Main Street, a 4DR project. We will also be voting to restructure the ad hoc committee for human rights. We'll also be reviewing a petition request for a gas leak audit. We'll then move to future agendas in minutes, and we will have an executive session with respect to litigation. With that, liaison reports. I will start with you, Mark.
Only somewhat a liaison report, but I wanted to report to the board that last Friday, the 11th Annual Medco Pool Party took place. Took great success. We had 80-plus people that came, many people from Boston, many people from Reading. Several hours, many school officials came, principals, local people, town officials. Great success again. It was just a great opportunity for people to get together and kind of showcase that program moving forward.
Wonderful.
That's it.
Thank you. Anne?
So, as a liaison to the Board of Health, I can provide a report. Andy may have something to add. The Board of Health voted actually upon one of Andy's suggestions that the, on a monthly basis, the health agent scan and send the health inspection reports to the members of the Board of Health, but that they not appear in the packet. That's, that is the result of a proposal that came before the Board of Health to have some regular posting of information and collection of data relative to health inspection reports. That's where they've landed. There was quite a bit of community input in that process. And then with respect to, Andy may have more to add on that matter, I'm not sure. With respect to the pesticide regulations, the Board of Health asks that each of us, to the extent we have input for them, and I know we provided that in person at our meeting, that we send written feedback to Bob, who can then forward it on to them.
Did they provide a timeline for when they wanted that?
They have not provided a timeline. I think as soon as possible would be helpful.
Why don't we self-impose a deadline for that? Just trying to open my calendar here. Would everyone be able to provide that feedback by next Friday, the 6th? And Bob, could I ask you to send a reminder to us on the 4th? Thank you. Is that all in?
That is all on the Board of, from the Board of Health. Andy, I don't know if you wanted to chime in now with anything else you'd like to add from the Board of Health meeting?
They, just a couple of things. They reorganized. Emmett Dove was elected chair. Eleanor Shomkoff was elected vice chair. Issue about, the Board had expressed an easy access to a summarized data set from health inspections. And so, but they wanted to be sensitive to staff time, which is why I suggested just having the, having the reports, the raw data essentially scanned and given to them. And that's it. Yeah, no, you covered it. Thanks.
Very good. Also, another area where I am the co-liaison with Andy, and I know Andy will be speaking later this evening, too, where we've arrived with a proposal on restructuring the ad hoc committee, but so you have a sense of where we are in terms of the substance of the work on the committee. We have committee members working on proposed mission and structure for a future human rights-focused organization with the goal of soliciting community stakeholder input. So that's, that's where we are as of now. Later on the agenda, I would be happy to go into greater detail on this, but I just wanted to let folks know that, in my capacity as one of the public safety liaisons together with John, that about a week and a half ago, we heard from Bob that the police chief position has been posted. And John and I met with Bob last week to learn more about the process going forward. Based on how the process has operated historically, John knew more about that, having been through it in other hiring processes. But I'm happy to provide a greater update when that appears on the agenda, with the goal additionally of hearing from the rest of the Board their thoughts on that process.
Great, thank you.
And just to echo what Anne's talking about, I mean, we have it on the agenda, so we'll be talking more about that. But I don't have anything beyond our work together on the public safety.
Okay, great. Andy, did you have?
Just a quick addition to Anne, did a great job covering the Board of Health and the ad hoc, which has sort of been keeping us busy lately. The ad hoc is also, in addition to, I don't know if you said this, but in addition to coming up with a, sort of how the, this entity would be formed, structured, another member is working on language for the mission of the, this entity. So that together with the mission and the formation, you have the basis for a committee or commission of the Board, or whatever. That's it.
As far as the ad hoc goes, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Set to Sunset, the end of November?
It is.
Is the committee on track to submit a recommendation by that time, or perhaps for an October agenda item, should we consider extending that?
So as part of tonight's agenda item, we're actually proposing an extension of the authorization through June 1st, with, but we are hoping that we can wrap up the work of coming up with the proposal by November, hoping that then we could go forward with putting something together for April town meeting, which is why we would want it authorized through June. So, but we are hoping that the, the main substance of the work in terms of what we're, what we would propose would be wrapped up by the original sunset date.
Great, okay. Thanks for the update. So I do not have liaison reports. Bob, I'll hand it off to you for town manager.
Thank you. A couple of dates, some that I'll ask the Board to attend, on August 28th, which is tomorrow. At 6 o'clock at the Reading Public Library, Mastodot is having a public meeting to discuss their paving operations on Main Street from the stone and border of the train tracks. They expect to begin sometime during the week of September 8th, including the possibility it will start on the 8th, which is a Sunday. We'll have a public safety and engineering staff there to help answer questions. As I understand it, they are likely to do nighttime work and daytime work. It is much more likely for them to do the paving during the day, but then the binder the night before, and to rip up roads, or, I'm sorry, at nighttime. And they'll provide a lot of communication in terms of, I believe the objective is to always keep two lanes open, one for north, one for south. So it'll certainly impact the community, and we'll stay on top of what the logistics are. September...
Are any detours, are any detours anticipated?
No.
Do they really think they're going to start the day that the fall street fair's rolling? I mean, with all, just common sense.
Yes, indeed. You know, they said the 8th, but I have to imagine they really meant Monday, the 9th. But they said it several times, so.
Well, maybe we should bring it up with them tomorrow night.
Can we influence that start date?
We'll ask.
If we can try.
Yeah. FinCom is meeting September 11th. That is a change from September 4th. They have canceled their 8, 9, 18 financial forum. I would ask that at least one Board member could attend the September 11th FinCom meeting. We will be providing some information to them as staff that would have been in a financial forum in order that the October financial forum can speed up. So we're going to give them some previews of a lot of information, and I think it'd be helpful for the Board to have a presence there.
Can you post us just to?
Certainly.
Cover us.
And then the next night, Thursday, September 12th, at 6 o'clock, the school committee is meeting in the high school library. I'd also request that a Board member attend approximately at 7 o'clock, because both the permanent building committee and our CASA will be on the agenda. The PBC is going to preview a lot of the work they did on the school buildings, which they'll give a summary in the October financial forum and November town meeting. So I think it'd be helpful if a Board member was there for that.
Let's go ahead and post for that one, too.
Okay.
Thanks.
We have two economic development meetings. We're meeting with Andy and Mark in another week or so to discuss in more detail. But on September 18th at 6 o'clock at the Pleasant Street Center, there's a reimagining Reading. Much more importantly than that, there's free pizza and ice cream, though. And there's big flyers going out. There's the pizza and the ice cream.
What time is that up at?
6 o'clock.
Thank you.
And the purpose of that is to specifically discuss the downtown area. On October 23rd, there's a broader economic development summit that's going to be held at the public library. The meeting start time will be either 6 o'clock or perhaps a little later, and we'll provide a lot more information as that date gets closer.
What time is that?
We don't know yet on the October 23rd, John. A lot of the businesses in town prefer a 6 o'clock start, not a 7:30 one, so we'll have to kind of wing that.
And that's October 23rd?
Correct. Those are both Wednesday nights.
Bob, so we don't keep mumbling among ourselves about what time, but would you mind sending just a brief list of these meetings, or in their dates and times?
Actually, I'll get to that. Yes, I will. A number of you, I think all of you, received an email from someone that was complaining about tree damage. I'll summarize that in late 2015, this person bought a house and contacted us about taking a tree down, a public tree. The tree was healthy, so we didn't, wasn't doing any harm. Since then, we've been out twice and trimmed it, and we went out again today to understand the concern. And the concern was about sap dropping on a car. So it wasn't branches falling, but it was sap falling. So I hope the issue has been solved this morning. Couple more things. Please note in your packet, there's a follow-up on some ABCC alleged violations for Cafe Capri and Anthony's Cold Fire Pizza. Both happened last April 1st. The Board's previously mentioned inviting liquor license holders in early in the process before their December 1st renewal applications. If the Board wants to do that, I'd like to send out invitations and get that on an agenda, because we need to contact the business community quickly. Both your October 15th and 29th meetings have plenty of room on the agenda. If the Board wants to have that kind of a meeting, just let us know. It doesn't have to be this minute, but just let me know.
Has that been done historically?
Once. Once the Board asked all the liquor license holders in, because there'd been a series of violations, and gave them a bin of talking to. I think, John, you might have been on the Board, or?
I was.
Just before you.
No, it was, as I was early on the Board, and, you know, we've actually had, since that time until this year.
It's been good, yeah.
It's been, almost nothing has happened, with one glaring exception, which we dealt with. So it's a little disturbing, we've got three of them, you know, in a very short window of time.
Okay, why don't we table that for the end of the meeting, and we can talk about future agendas and see if that makes sense or not.
Okay. And lastly, Anne, if you don't mind passing that around, this is a draft 2020 schedule from January through December for the Board to look at. I'd ask you to send me any comments or concerns over the next week or so, and then I'll put this electronically in your September 10 packet.
Thanks, Bob.
Especially, I'd like to draw your attention to February 18th or 25th. The best meeting date would normally be the 18th. There's a lot of reasons, but primarily it's election-focused. There's a deadline of the 25th. Because of the winter especially, I never like to meet on a deadline. I like to meet before a deadline. But unfortunately, February 18th is school vacation, so I'd ask the Board members to have a look at the schedule and give me some feedback on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
One quick, I apologize for missing the liaison. The Economic Development Subcommittee did, in fact, leave, I mentioned upcoming meetings. But I wanted to just mention that we, I think, are on track to be able to come back at the end of September, and we end up to have a discussion about a suggested structure and mission statement for what that would do. As Bob pointed out, one of the things that is part of the discussion is that this would be kind of a strategic economic development activity. And in other words, the downtown is clearly a critical part of it, but other parts of town are as well. And that's perhaps a distinction from some of the very downtown-focused operational activities. And so we should be prepared to come back with some information on that. We're conducting interviews with some past members of economic development committees in town. We've also looked at some other towns and what they're doing, and found an interesting model, in terms of another town that's doing some things, making contact with them to see how it's working. And we'll be able to come back in late September and re-recommendate it.
Right. So, Bob, as far as the February 4th, 18th, 25th, is there a reason why we don't do the 11th? I realize it puts, gives us two meetings back-to-back.
No reason.
But that seems to?
Couldn't do that.
Address your concern and buffer us a little bit more for that 25th deadline?
Sure, yeah.
Unless there are any objections to the 11th, 4th and 11th? All right. Let's move forward with that then, Bob. All right. Great. So, next up, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for public comment? Hands raised? Great, thank you. Just a reminder, please raise your hand, provide your name and address. Please keep comments to topics under the purview of this Board, and please no derogatory or campaign-related comments. Bill?
Bill Brown, Queen of Matron, not the purview, but there are now five flags and the American flag above the honor roll at the high school. Thanks to, I think, the PTO, I'm pretty sure. And that's nice. The other thing, Kevin and I have been meeting together to get the flag for the flagpole for five from, or two that were not on the original flag, seven from Vietnam, one in Korea, and the one more is in the US, are stacked. We hope to have that by November the 11th. We're meeting February, September 18th with the Historical Commission, to see if we can get permission on the rock. If they don't give us permission, I'll move it anyway, so. Another thing, this is the 75th year of the rocket, the full ball season, so.
Okay.
And I know the history, so it's about the night we say.
Thanks, Bill.
All the water town.
Next. Anne?
Mary Ellen O'Neil, West Side Black Summer Avenue. I've been thinking for some time about talking to the CPDC about trees, but it may be better for the South Board to develop a town-wide tree policy. I don't know if this is how we've talked about. That would incorporate all tree-related decision-making by town boards and departments. Nothing we can do at this point will allow us to return to our collective role with climate as we move it. Perhaps we can slow the rate of change. We are one of the fastest-warming areas of the country. Trees can be one of our best resources to help us in this endeavor. It is past time that we allow clear-cutting of trees to make room for new subdivisions for commercial developments. We need some standards that keep at a minimum trees of a certain caliber or diameter. We need to allocate more money this year and all subsequent years to our tree budget. When we first came to Reading in the 90s, we had a shade tree nursery that was funded annually, and then we funded it biannually, and now we can't really keep up with the trees that we have to take down. I mean, some are just aging out, some aren't really strong species to begin with. And we know that many, many trees on private property have been taken down with little or no replacement. We also need more robust standards for greenery in our residential commercial projects throughout our community. We don't have one as egregious as this, but if you notice, the parking lot at the lobster club over the line in North Reading, they put in this vast amount of new pavement with not a single tree. And in the summer, I know I've had a hard time going from a very hot parking lot into the store, if that heat is just radiating, you know, the temperature is just radiating more heat. And we need to see this, particularly downtown, where we've allowed the developments to come right out of the sidewalk, and we're not requiring that much greenery downtown anymore. So thank you for listening.
Thanks, Marilyn. Tom?
I guess, just a point of clarification. Tom, I want to deal with South Street. And for school committee, if somebody's speaking to something on the agenda, we ask them to hold and tell us the agenda. I didn't know if that's what you want to do here as well, because I know there are people who want to speak to the lighting in particular, so just what's your preference?
You're welcome to either, it's fairly early on the agenda, so if you'd like to wait until that point, you're welcome to do so, or you can do so now if you'd like to, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to wait. I'll open it up to public comment later as well, if that's your question. All right. Of course.
Martha Moore, 102 San Mor Lane, and I'm thinking about the gas leak audit that's on the agenda later in the evening, and I would like to support that. I think knowledge is power. And as I was driving over all the plates and patches on Main Street coming south to get to this meeting, I was thinking, the sooner we know where the gas leaks are, the less likely we are to pave the roads and have beautiful, smooth pavement, and then have to tear them up to fix gas leaks. So it would be good to find out as much information as we can see.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So, next up, we will be appointing a new RMLD CAD member. We have a recommendation from the VASG. I believe that was Andy and Mark in this instance, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Do you want you to take it away?
Mark, we hadn't figured out who would handle this one. But we interviewed a person to be on the RMLD, um...
Community Citizens Advisory Board.
CAD, Citizens Advisory Board. This individual had already been a member of the CAD. I believe he lived in Lynnfield, and he has served for quite a long time on that, as a member of the CAD from that community. He's now moved to Reading, and he would like to serve on our behalf, on our behalf. And I was quite impressed with him. I think Mark felt the same way, so we're putting forward his name to recommend to the Board.
Were there any other applicants for that position?
There were not. No. I would just say, he is exceptionally well-qualified for the position. He's an investor in the space, knows what's going on quite well, is involved with the communities, is involved with the RMLD as an active member. I think he'd be a great asset to reappoint.
I've had the privilege of hearing him speak at meetings when he was a representative from Lynnfield, and I think he'll be more fortunate to have him here.
Yeah.
Unless there's any further discussion of the motion?
What's his name?
Vivek Soni. Sorry.
That's part of the motion.
Vivek, S-O-N-I.
What is it?
Vivek, V-I-B-G-K, Soni, S-O-N-I.
Great. So, Mark, you can read the motion?
We'll get the Board to appoint Vivek Soni to a full position on the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board for a term ending June 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Motion carries. So, next up, we will be voting to approve space for temporary lighting at Birch Meadow while Turf 2 is under repair. We have Jenna, our recreation director here, so come on up.
I just got a raise.
Oh, corny, proper title.
No, you just got a title.
All right. Welcome, Jenna.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I don't really have anything formal prepared for this evening. It's pretty straightforward what we're asking for. As you all may know, Turf 2 is being renovated at the high school, so it'll be offline for the majority of the fall. We have a really popular program, I'm not sure if you've heard of it. It's called Saturday Night Lights. We have 738 kids enrolled in the program currently, and we usually get about 750 to 800 every single year. So it's very, very popular. The atmosphere down there is insane, people love it, children and parents alike. I know that a couple people in the crowd are coaches, even our program coordinator, Shannon, will be coaching a girls' team this year. So with Turf 2 being offline, there'll be four fields that we utilize on Turf 2 that we will no longer have to run this program at capacity. So I went to the REC Committee in July, and I asked what they thought about lighting the Imagination Station Lot next to Birch Meadow to allow for those four fields to still be used for the program, so we could run it. So they agreed that lighting that area would be great, and they recommended that we do it, and that we bring it to the Select Board for your approval. And also, in that meeting, it was discussed, and I had brought up, and they agreed, that when those lights aren't being utilized for Saturday Night Lights, that the other organizations... when those lights aren't being utilized for Saturday Night Lights, that the other organizations, specifically Reading United Soccer, Pop Warner, maybe Reading Field Hockey, can utilize that space, so the lights aren't sitting idle for the whole week. Because they have also been impacted with Turf 2 being offline. They use Turf 2 whenever they can to get some extra space under the lights. So, we're just asking that that space be lit, so we could run Saturday Night Lights at full capacity, and also have some additional space for our youth organizations to utilize during the week that they'll also be losing.
Okay. So, a few questions before we move on. What is the anticipated cost?
The lights at, the portable lights at Birch Meadow will be $4,200 is the quote that I received.
And then where will that funding be coming from?
The revolving fund.
So, the town is covering that?
Correct.
Great. And so what is the ask of the board tonight?
Specifically that you allow us to light that area with the three portable lights?
Okay. Right, Bob?
And I'm the one that butted in and added the Parker Middle School field after discussing this with Gail Dowd, the school CFO. Schools really see no need for it. Jenna sees no need for it if the weather behaves and things go normally, and I agree with all of that. But if something happens and suddenly that space is unusable, whether it's rain or something else, I don't think the sports organizations would benefit from waiting for it in your next meeting. So, it just seems like allowing it in an emergency, which is a whole nother issue. It would be a lot more expensive. There's a lot more lights than the notification of the butters. But we've discussed how to do that in the event of basically an emergency.
Thank you. I mean, this seems pretty straightforward to me. The town has, the community has already agreed to invest in Turf 2. This seems like a fairly straightforward housekeeping matter of us being asked to grant permission for the use of these spaces to be lit, as that falls under our purview. So, unless anybody
Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Jenna, who will be responsible for managing the lights during the morning, turning them off, things like that?
That's a great question. So, I have reached out to all the organizations. I would be more than willing to turn on the lights before I left, as would Shannon. And I have asked the organizations to designate two specific people from each organization only to turn the lights off and on, and then when the lights get delivered, I will show them how to shut them off and on. I will even send a video to them in case they forget. And the DPW will also be refueling them for us as well. So, I'll be overseeing that specific area, and the organizations will be helping as well.
Great. And so each night, one person will end up with responsibility to make sure it's off?
Yep. There's two designated people, so whoever is on for that night from that particular organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, unless, I know there's public comment on this, so before I open it up to that, is there anyone on the board who has questions or concerns? This seems pretty straightforward that we want to support this and agree to having these fields lit.
I agree. I agree. That's a good question, because
Yes.
Good point. And this has been accepted by the Recreation Committee?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Public comment? Please remember to state your name and address.
Wayne Mota, 25 Ashley Place in Reading. Obviously, that's right. Thanks, Jenna, for letting us move the lights. That's great. We're excited about that. I know this is common. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
In the case of the 100-year flood, if we had to move or the lights had to be moved, how would that go along? What would the cost of that be? Because it's a rental, so to move lights from one field to the other, I know I kind of work in that space, so movement of lights is expensive, so. Say you have a week in the middle of the season, a week at the end of the season that they'd have to be moved from field to field. How would that work? What would it cost? How quickly could the timing be on something like that? Has anyone looked into that?
Bob? If we do have to relocate the Parker, I believe it's 10 lights instead of four. Is that about right?
Yep.
And the cost would be more than $10,000 if it were the full season. My understanding is DPW would move them. But again, that's, that is the 100-year flood. That is something that we don't anticipate, and should it happen, we're going to have to gather in that discussion. But staff would move it, and we'll have to go out and procure. I'm not even sure if those four lights can be used. I don't think they were tall enough.
Yeah, I think that there would have to be taller lights, and instead of moving them, I think the solution would be getting additional, right?
And would that be paid for out of the revolving fund?
Same, yeah.
And if that were to happen, would the board need to vote on anything, or you can move without us?
No, this would cover that emergency.
That would cover it? Perfect. Okay.
All right. So, to my comment, thank you. To my comment, and it has more to do with the lack of field space, and particularly Rusk, and obviously Saturday Night Lights has a great enrollment. We're not much under that, about 652 kids that need approximately 742 hours of practice time. We have about 475 now. And it's less of an issue about the fields themselves, but more in this time of the year, how much time can be utilized with the late school start. I know that, for whatever reason, and I haven't got to talk to you, Jenna, or about it, but I know you've talked to Mike, that the AD has requested to have field permits for the high school longer, so we're talking about 7 o'clock start times for Rusk on a majority of fields that aren't lit. So, we have permits. We have great fields. We have the ability to use them, but starting at 7 o'clock, or even 6 o'clock as we head into the fall, you know, with sunset, you know, at the fourth week of September, last light is 6:55. So, even if we got permits for 6, we have an hour on each field, and it's just not enough time. It's just, it's, to the point of Parker, you see that as a great opportunity to open up a ton of time to have practice for all teams. I know a butters may be an issue. We're talking, and again, I'm not discounting one person. It makes a difference too, but I think we have someone here tonight that isn't a butter, that actually is the guy right on the corner of Temple and the school itself, as well as there's five total homes, and one's unoccupied right now. So, we're talking about three additional people to notify. My issue is, I know protocol, and you have to go through and make that happen, but if we can't get more field space, it won't happen this year at all. It's impossible to make it happen. And you're talking about impacting 652 kids, and, you know, I've been doing this a long time. It's about 100, I spend 15 hours a week all year round volunteering for all different sports in town. And it's a big deal for kids to be out there and have, you know, have their time on the field, and to their parents, it's a big deal. You know, we're providing a service, but it's our product, and it's important, you know, so.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Pete Comer, 24 Smith Ave., Mother Rusk Board, oh, sorry. Glad you built it. Thank God. Did I go, you know, Wayne's comments? Yeah, I think part of this too is the Turf 2 being down displacing a lot of folks this specific fall season. So, Parker as an option, as needed, is great, thank you. We talked as a club where we would foot bill even for the lights down at Parker. Paying ourselves, share with other organizations. We're one group. We would reach out to the other groups if we use the space also, share the cost amongst us. Again, I think that the problem, the success of recreation is how people want to be part of it, adults, kids, being down one field in peak season like fall is a real, real hand behind the back. So, if they're helping to fund the lights down there as needed, whatever they find as, for this one specific season, would be a huge help to us, and for Jenna, it would be, you know, blessed be both Parker and her from all ends. So, thank you.
To your point, personally, to me, this seems like something the town should foot, and it's their expense, and that's the person's been taken, so.
I just have a question. Have, has recreation, have you guys been to recreation and made this request? Because I think the programs come through recreation, correct? Okay. So, is this news tonight, or has recreation considered going to the school committee? Because the school committee controls Parker. You know, the selectmen do not.
Actually, you do.
How is that possible?
The vagaries of Reading.
Oh, my God. All right. So, so good. You're in the right place then. Which is most unusual.
Yeah.
Because everywhere else, that's not the case, every other school. So, has the idea of a second set of lights come up with recreation?
Tom?
Yeah. Tom, what's with you on South Street? Jenna, and, you know, we can speak to this a little bit. There was a meeting a few weeks ago, probably back in early July, I think, give or take, about the fall schedule and what was going to happen and whatnot. At that time, there was a question about whether or not there was still funding for Parker. And there was some follow-up along those lines. You all may remember, and as far as I can follow it up with, I tried to get Chuck and be able to figure it out today as well, there was money allocated in the school committee budget in January exactly for this reason. It was $20,000, give or take, at that point in time. So, somewhere between the schools and the town, somewhere there's money, somewhere allocated for it, and this was discussed as a problem of communication at that point in time that we were trying to resolve. Because this is a foreseen absolute fact. Before we go there, John, and one other thing I want to add as well, in addition to that, in addition to what a few other people said, people aren't giving enough account for how torn up Birch Meadow is going to be throughout this time, and how completely unusable it will be in the middle of October. You have about three or four weeks of season after that point in time, and if you have teams on there, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, there's no rest time for that, none whatsoever. Parker as a turf field can handle that. Birch Meadow as a grass field cannot. And Saturday Night Lights tears up the field big time. So, I really think we should figure out, from a select board perspective, a recommending perspective, I'm obviously here wearing two hats, because I also am Reading United, figure out how we can make sure Parker is eliminated throughout the season, not just on a ad hoc temporary basis.
So, Tom, to your point, I would recommend, many of those recommendations come through the Recreation Committee. They're our first approach. We have the chair here tonight. So, I would recommend if there are concerns or suggestions or preferences on how that's to move forward, I would recommend attending one of the meetings and discussing it directly with them before it elevates to us, because I'd be very interested in, to hear their perspective on it as well.
Can I just come and put that on to our next meeting's agenda? I just have a placeholder in case there is an item that comes forward to it?
We can. I wanted to defer to Recreation first. I'd wanted to have it come directly from there.
Agreed. I just don't want it to wait a month or longer.
Oh, because of the timing. That's fair. We can add a placeholder. Yeah, absolutely. Good point. Thank you. John, also your question, then, Tom?
The reason I was asking that question is because protocol is that we've waited to hear from Recreation, and it doesn't sound like Recreation has heard this other than in passing. That's why I ask if any of you had brought it to an agenda item at Recreation. And to Mark's point, I get where, right where you're at. I mean, timing is everything. This thing's rolling now, or very shortly. I mean, the fall season's coming, and if it hasn't, it has not been in front of Recreation. Is that correct?
They haven't specifically discussed Parker. They've only discussed the lights at Birch Meadow, but we could certainly address it at our next meeting.
So, the big question is, when is the next Recreation meeting, right?
So, I'm going to put a pause on this. We have representatives, teams from the various committees, or the various groups who represent sports and athletics here. I would highly encourage you to reach out to Recreation, get on their agenda sooner rather than later, hopefully. We will put a placeholder on our agenda for our next meeting, in the event that Recreation can meet before that and make a recommendation for us for the board's consideration. With that said, are there more comments specifically to the lighting on the agenda? Yes?
Hi, Peter, 37 Temple Street. I have Butler Field, and I'm a parent, soccer player, and the urgency to this cannot be understated. If we wait too long, you know, we're going to lose out on time, practice time, you know. And we can't, I don't, actually, I don't know why Parker doesn't already have permanent lights, but that part aside, the traffic's not an issue, the lights aren't an issue, the timing's an issue. In the spring, they're on the fields till 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, whether it's just kids, you know, shooting the ball around or not, so it's not a problem with the timing. There are five houses that are about it. One is unoccupied right now, pending sale. The other, I'm one of the other ones. And on the opposite side for me, the other house doesn't, two of the houses don't even, only one lines up directly with the field. The other one's up the hill as you come down the road, so if the committee can make some motion to speed things up for the rec committee ahead of time, that would be something that would take out a procedural issue, I guess. So, but the season starts now, so.
Okay.
And we need the time now for all the players. I mean, so many teams, and so many kids have all, have also been a coach, assistant coach, and you definitely have a playing time to get the kids out of summer mode, back into that shape for soccer.
Thank you, Tom.
Goodness.
Andy?
I hear all of what you're saying, and I, as a former coach, Rusk coach, you know, we played on the upper level of Parker where there were roots growing and stuff like that. So, you guys do a great, great job of utilizing as much space as possible. And while I would like to hear, I'd like to consider the use of Parker. We, I think, at least I feel that it's important to respect the input from the Recreation Committee, as they are sort of the professionals that advise us, if you do, in the manner of speaking. So, whenever they can meet and discuss it and bring it forward, we'll go, you know, we'll hear their recommendation and go from there, at least, at least the way I
Thanks, Andy. Any other public comment on the subject? Great. Mark, if you can read the motion to approve the usage of the
I have another question, if that's all right. So, Jenna, have you, have you adjusted the user fees to reflect the costs of the lights here, and then potentially the lights that will, might go at Parker? Have those been adjusted to reflect the added cost? Because that's how fees are, you come to the terms of fees based on cost, and the cost is different.
Yeah, I have not.
I mean, it's substantially different.
Yeah.
So, that's something to consider, and I know that Pete mentioned, you know, the willingness to step forward and write a big check, but I think if you spread it out, I mean, through the, you know, through the user fee for the fields, I mean, that's, you know, using fields in many other towns, I know that that's the way that, whatever it costs, is what they charge.
Yeah, and I didn't think of that. That is a good point. I didn't think about that just from the standpoint that I was looking at it, that it's kind of an extenuating circumstance. So, Turf 2 is offline in the late school starting, so I don't really know what it will actually look like in the future, because Turf 2 is kind of like just throwing a wrench into everything. So, I thought it was fair to keep the fees the same, because they will be sacrificing the lights at Turf 2, and wouldn't be playing on a commensurate surface if they're at the Birch Meadow grass.
I'm just trying to keep the money straight. I'm not trying to
Yeah.
I'm not trying to push out fees. I'm just
Right, right.
Trying to keep it, you know, in the boxes that they're supposed to be in.
Yeah.
That's all. I mean, I think it's just good, good policy for us to do that.
I mean, from what we've heard, though, one, I mean, it's $4,200, right? I mean, this is not a tremendous amount.
Potentially $10,000 more.
That's a, that'll be, that would be a separate discussion, but as far as the $4,200 goes, I mean, that seems like something that A, was anticipated, and B, was budgeted, so it seems inappropriate to redistribute that from a fee perspective to the users.
I don't know how we can come to the conclusion that it was budgeted, because what we did is we, the capital project was accounted for. Now, I don't know that we were, you know, accounting for additional expenses separate from the capital project, and we allocated that.
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to flag both of us. We've both gone off topic.
We're right, exactly on topic.
Well, for the purposes of tonight, we have been asked to vote to approve the use of the space. But I agree, if we want to have a longer conversation about it, I think we can, but we have to move on with the agenda. Mark, you'd be so kind.
Move to approve temporarily lighting the area near the Birch Meadow Unlit Softball Field for athletics and recreation programs, to allow Reading organizations to use these lights and field space, and to approve temporary lights at the Parker Middle School Turf Field, and use of that space as may be needed by these Reading organizations due to weather or other unforeseen events as determined by the Recreation Administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Motion carries. Thank you all very much for coming.
Thanks.
Good.
Just one quick comment.
Go on.
Might be helpful. I know that the school department did, in fact, allocate some money for understanding that there would be some issues going on. It'd be great to understand what that was, what was done, because it definitely was in the budget.
It was for two purposes. It was either 15 or 20 grand, Tom. I really don't remember, but you're right. One of them was busing, though, just to keep that in mind. It was because there would be less home games, you'd have to bus to more away games. So I don't know what that's cost, but that's definitely a factor.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sure there's not this big pool there, but I'm just wondering, let's just get it accounted for. Let's just figure out what's in there.
Okay. Great. Thank you all. All right. Next up on the agenda, we will be having an update on the police chief hiring process. So Bob, am I handing this over to you, or Ann, are you speaking on it as liaison?
I was planning to speak to it as liaison, but I think questions should go probably to all of us. I haven't been through this process before, John has, and Bob certainly understands it from, from front to back in a way that I don't have, I don't have the background. So the job for police chief has been posted, I understand.
Pick up a little bit, Ann.
Yes. The job, the, the police chief position has been posted to solicit applicants. I understand applicants have been received both internally and externally. The town has hired a consulting agency to oversee the process. The consultant has an array of services that they can provide. And the town is currently planning to have the, the agency oversee an assessment center. So out of the applicant pool, a certain number will be selected to go through the assessment center, which, which the, which a group of, a group of town staff. And I think, Bob, I think, would you like to go over who you've thought of for the selection committee? So this, the selection committee would not run the assessment center. This consultant would run the assessment center with the selection committee to observe.
Yeah, a selection committee, which I'll describe shortly, would have an upfront job to decide how many candidates to send to the assessment center, typically three to seven. And then a back end job, and then sit through and watch only as observers, the assessment center. We sit back there, we're not allowed to say a word. Watch it. The firm that runs it is generally retired police chiefs, or sometimes active police chiefs, not in this geography. They take a little bit of time and write up a pretty thorough evaluation of what they saw. And make, don't make a recommendation just to score all the candidates in many, many areas. And that's something that we, as a selection committee, have a lot of input to upfront. What are the things that are, you know, interesting to your community, or important to your community? And then depending on the day of the assessment center and the performance of the candidates, the task of the selection committee could be quite simple, or quite complex, depending on what happened. In the past, I've been part of both of those scenarios. So I had selected Ann and John from the select board, Chuck Robinson from the school committee, Fire Chief Greg Burns, Library Director Eamon Lambon, HR Director Judy Perkins, as the six that would join me in this process.
So I understand that the consulting agency can provide an array of services, but it depends on what the budget is. And something like coming up with a community profile would require, that that could be disseminated to applicants. Perhaps some glossy brochure would, would be above current budget. Something like interviewing all members of the select board to get, to solicit their input would be within budget, although not currently contracted. John and I talked about wanting to have a community and public input process, which could, which could include the two of us, which could include the board as a whole. Bob has pointed out that we don't have any office hours scheduled for the select board that could be part of, or that could potentially be part of an opportunity to solicit public So that's, I think that's, we thought we would want, would want to hear from the board, thoughts on the process. I understand that the first part of the process is TBD in terms of who would be, how folks would be chosen from the applicant pool to continue to the assessment center. I don't know how that's, how has that operated in the past?
Well, again, and I can't speak for the current process, but in the past, generally speaking for a police chief, you have very few applicants. You know, I'd be guessing as to why, but I will say that I do not expect to see area chiefs apply for the job as a courtesy to Reading. They just don't. I expect to see chiefs from further away, probably smaller organizations, certainly ranked officers, lieutenants, sergeants from any agency, including Reading. And much like the assessment center helps determine how hard the rest of your job is, the applicant pool determines how hard that first part is. I've not looked at the applicant pool. But again, traditionally, the numbers are not high. As, I was aware of one community, it turned out to be a large city, that spent a lot of upfront time advertising, community profile, and so forth, and did get a lot of applicants, and had about 70% of them not qualified. So, you know, I can't say what will happen, but I can just say, based on experience, you pretty much have a closed pool of qualified people. If someone wants to apply for the job from outside of Massachusetts, and they've never been in Massachusetts, that is a very large uphill climb. Because Mass general laws are very different than the rest of the world. A person who has worked under Mass general laws for their career would just have a layup. Doesn't mean someone can't learn. But from past experience, you know, we've, we've seen good candidates from New Hampshire, Maine, one from Connecticut that had previously worked in Massachusetts, but none from outside that, you know, would really be able to walk in. This is one of the most important jobs in the community, certainly. It deserves a lot of scrutiny. And it is a very, if you will, a very professional position. It's not something you take a flyer on someone. I think they can grow into the job. This person would be fine. It really has to be a hire that everyone feels very proud of.
And historically, has the, that initial screening been done by a selection committee, or by, not by the consultant, but by the selection committee?
The consultant, if asked, and we have asked in the past, will give you insight into some of the candidates. Now, would they give the insight to me or to the selection committee? It's not clear. They'd give me the choice. Retired police chiefs and current police chiefs know a lot about candidates for these jobs that you don't necessarily want to describe in public, for instance. I know why this person's applying, because there's this problem where they are. So that process, plus the fire chief's very helpful, and also getting information. You know, we like to kind of avoid the problems right upfront, to the extent we have good legal advice on them. I'm open to doing it either way. I don't have a problem with the selection committee seeing all that. That's the way we've done it in the past, but other communities don't always do it that way.
One other thing that was, had not been clear to me previously, but Bob is charged with hiring the police chief, the select board as a whole is charged with ratifying or not the selection.
Vanessa, along to, just tick off from, from what Ann stated, does it make sense for this board to have a more upfront role in how the individuals will be assessed, so that candidates are selected somewhat based on the feelings of the board, so the board is more likely to ratify a candidate that comes forward? So there's that, that comment. What kind of input do we want the board to have upfront in the hiring process? And then the second question is, I think, this is something that we're, I think in hiring a police chief, I'd really like to stress, what I think Ann and John recommended is to have community input on, on, on what the community is, what this community is looking for in their police chief. And I would think that would be a big, that would, that would influence me greatly if I could understand what the community is looking for in a police chief, when it comes time to ratify.
Further to that point, Bob, you mentioned some candidates for the selection committee, but you didn't mention any citizens on that.
Correct.
Is there a reason why?
Don't want the group too large, certainly. I don't know how I would find a resident that would be, in some fashion, qualified to hire a police chief compared to another resident. I don't know how to do that.
I would actually imagine you could find a couple of people that would have a lot of interest in, in participating that way. It just strikes me that we, we need this community input as much of upfront as we possibly can. But the selection committee is where things really are decided, in terms of who's going to move on. And it would strike me that to have one or two citizens added to that group, you'd be a jockey people at that point, if I got it right. But that, I think, would be a very helpful part of the process.
So to answer kind of both Andy and Mark's questions, it's sort of two issues. One is how the board gets involved, and one is how residents or the community gets involved. I had imagined how the community gets involved was through you, all five. And then you five funnel to whoever's in the selection committee. Still under discussion. Technically, we've not signed a contract and established a scope of work with this firm, other than the assessment center is definitely a given. That's just, that's just necessary. But as Ann mentioned, and I expected to do it this time, they expect to talk to each of you individually. Now, the question is, when do you want that to happen? And how do you engage the public, perhaps before that, so that you can then reflect that? You know, the idea of one or two residents is okay, but again, I don't know how you're going to find residents that are going to reflect the whole community the way you five are, respectfully. That's what your job is. You know, I could pick, or you could pick one or two residents, and we'll get complaints. Why wasn't this one picked? Why wasn't that one picked? You know, whatever.
I have a, to that point, the seven people you've mentioned, aren't they all citizens of this town?
I better check. Yes. Yes, they are. No, Judy's not, sorry.
Okay, Judy.
Six out of seven.
So six of the seven are citizens of Reading. And at least two of those, in this case, have been elected by the citizens of this town to represent them. And what we're talking about is opening a dialogue with anybody that wants to talk to, specifically, in this case, to the two of us, that was a plan that we had, but could speak to each of us individually. And that could be brought back in a, in a discussion format. So I mean, you know, the idea of being able to manage the selection committee, I think, is really important. And I don't think that anybody's going to find an issue with it being represented by the Board of Selectmen, you know, by fire, by users, the library, for example, human resources, and the town manager. I mean, that seems to be a very logical approach.
The school committee chair as well.
Yeah.
So, one thing to mention here is that, so, I think it was two, two or three years ago now, when we were searching for a library director, I was asked to be a resident representative on that selection committee that narrowed down the pool. It was actually a wonderful experience. There were library trustees, there were library staff, and there was another resident in addition to myself. And I think that having residents who are not elected officials lends a different perspective. We are sort of enmeshed in everything that happens, and that is our job. That's why we were elected. And I think that having a resident perspective from people that are not sitting where we sit gives a different view of people that are not as involved in the day to day. And I think it adds value. It also lends itself to transparency, which is one of the things that we've struggled with on other topics, not this one in particular, obviously. So I, I would be inclined to have one or two, and we could open it up to have something similar to what we do. We could post it the way we do any other volunteer positions.
Who would do the interviewing of the citizens?
The VAS.
Oh, if it's a volunteer, we could do it at the VAS.
Just, just to caution the board, this is my choice, not your choice, and we have to be legally very careful how this proceeds. It is not you selecting the people for the selection committee. You can certainly suggest them to me, but legally, you have to be careful what you do. Because the, the thing we all want to avoid, I think desperately, is turning this selection committee into a body that somehow is under open meeting law.
Well, I think that's very easily avoided simply by having less than a quorum of us be represented on that.
If you have a two-person subcommittee, those are subject to open meeting law. So again, how you get there is very tricky.
Agreed, agreed. But I also think.
So this is already under, I'm sorry.
I also think this is something that, respectfully, Bob, while it's absolutely at your purview, I also hope that it's something that can be viewed collaboratively between this board, the school committee, the library, and the residents. And in doing that, it makes it a more holistic approach to how we determine who's on the selection committee and the outcomes that come from.
I'm just cautioning the board that we really have to be careful on the process that you use to get there. I'm not doubting the objectives or the objectives.
You know, speaking of, about open meeting law with this, doesn't, isn't it all the way that it's been proposed, subject, subject to open meeting law because two select board members are working on it?
No, because the town manager has selected them. The board has not voted them on.
So, all right. So there's two different parts. I saw a question in the audience, Tom.
FYI, just a point of information.
As a point of clarification, are you speaking as a school committee member or as a resident?
Speaking as a school committee member.
Thank you.
Speaking on that behalf, just as a note, that when the school, when the, when Dr. Doherty has been hiring people, like the most recent director of student services, that process did include community members, in particular, parents from the school. It included, you know, members of the admin staff, teachers, principals, and a couple of members from, from the parent community. So just as an FYI, from a parallel perspective, if that helps at all.
Thank you, Tom. So, Bill?
My child, it's Bob, it's John, and I'm doing.
Thank you, Bill.
Actually, did, did Dr. Doherty select the community members for that process? Did the school committee select the community members for that process? How did, do you remember?
Dr. Doherty selects them. He sends out an email as a, you know, here's the process. If, what happens is he goes through and he says, we're hiring somebody, here's the process I'm going to undertake. And we say, okay, that looks great. And then he goes through and selects the people to be part of that.
Okay.
And then he reports back that who those are, and then he's, actually, to that point as well, he's the hiring agent, and we are, in many cases, the ratifying body as well. Almost very, very similar process was.
Thank you, Tom. So look, there's, there seems like, like there's two questions that have arisen. The first is, who from the board represents us, at Bob's choosing, supposedly, on this selection committee? And the second is, who comprises the selection committee more broadly, including the potential for residents? So with those two questions on the table, I'd be curious for the board's thoughts.
Well, I think the other question, and maybe you blended in the last part, is how do you get public input? Because just two residents aren't going to do that.
Agreed. I think that's, yes, I think that's a separate and broader question.
Two new residents.
Right. And?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I, you know, I respect the legalities of the issue, and that it's the town manager's, manager's job for the charter. And then the select board is a ratifying body. But as previously stated by Vanessa, I would hope that it would be, from the get-go, Bob, a collaborative experience. Obviously, we can't order you to put two resident, residents on the selection committee. But would you be willing to consider what we might recommend, or?
Of course.
But we would not be able to interview them by the VAS, for example.
Well, I think the challenge is, how does any of us pick two residents that are representative of 27,000 people for this? I just, I just don't know how.
I think you may overestimate the number of people who would volunteer for this.
Well, they have to volunteer. Yeah, all right.
So I mean, you know.
That could be, but.
Following what? Well, I mean, there's a couple of different ways we could go about this. One, if you're watching at home and you'd be interested, you can reach out to us, the board, or to the town manager directly if you're interested in becoming the citizen representative. And two, if there's someone that we as board members think could be an appropriate person to represent the community as a resident, we could go, that's how I was asked to be part of the library selection committee, library director. It could be posted on the website. We don't have a parent email list the way the superintendent does to reach out to, but we have other means.
Taxpayers.
So I think that that's spot on in terms of the approach is, kind of open up, ask people if they would like to participate, and that's great. I do think that there is an important role in the public input to us, in thinking through how we can do something that entices people to come and will be there to listen, beyond office hours, because I don't think that's proven to be an effective way to get a lot of people to come so far. So I think we need something broader than that. But I think that this is a very worthy topic of that, and maybe it's actually having a couple of listening sessions, literally, and sponsoring them, giving people lots of notice, talking about it through the community, and getting it out there.
Which actually brings up a really good point that we haven't talked about, Bob. What is the timeline for this process? Are we talking three months, six months, a year?
As soon as possible is the fairest answer. I mean, the department has been operating under difficult circumstances for far too long, and this process just needs to move along, but not at a speed that won't yield a good result. So we have to get the good result first.
All right, so, let's take these one at a time. We've already identified a few methods to reach out to the community to have someone be volunteer.
Yes.
As far as who from our board is a member of that selection committee, I know it defaulted to Ann and John as liaisons to public safety, but I'd be curious if the board has other thoughts on whether that is the most logical approach, if we are comfortable with that, if not.
Can I speak to the first point? And then about the having community members on the committee? I would look to, as far as people who are qualified to give input into what type of police chief we're looking for, there are a number of people that I know that have been longstanding members of town government, volunteers, who know the town very well, they're very connected to the town. Some have been select board members previously, some have been on town meeting forever. And I would, I think I would try to make sure that one of those individuals were included for the knowledge of the town. As far as your second question goes, I'll let somebody else weigh in on that, I guess. All right, I lied. I'll weigh in. I think that if the chair has time, the chair should be involved in this. We voted for you as chair to do certain things, and yes, it's not this particular thing, but I think that that would be an appropriate, one of the appropriate picks to be considered.
Thanks.
I think that's well-stated in terms of the possibility of participating, but other than that, I think it may be that all of us would want to be involved, and I don't think that's practical. I think we should narrow it down to a couple of people.
Okay.
Just to add in a wrinkle, I'll try to think about the flexibility here, but this has been a daytime activity previously for a lot of reasons. And that does limit some people, whether it's your participation or the public. Some of it absolutely has to be daytime, there's no alternative, but maybe some of it could be night meetings.
Ann, John, I don't know if you have thoughts on this?
Well, I was excited about becoming part of the process. I want a good result at the end of the day, and I want a process that all members of the board feel comfortable with. I think some of my background related to criminal justice and the law could be useful in looking at this, but I also, my higher priority is a good process and a good result that the board as a whole is comfortable with, so that's where I am, I guess.
John, your thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I have some thoughts. First of all, it seems like on the first item, I really don't think it serves the process to try to find a random, you know, person to join Bob's selection committee. That's just a personal opinion. Just from the standpoint of having been involved at various times in various venues in committee selection, what I have found is that if you have people who have closer working relationships and knowledge of both the position and the expected outcome, results turn out more efficient, and you get a better result. That has been my personal experience, because I've been involved in committee selection, both in this town and professionally. And so, from that standpoint, I think that we're going to put a citizen or two in a very difficult position. We could ask that person, we could solicit people who we think would be good at it, and I think that honestly, you're going to put them in a really tough spot. I think it makes it that much more difficult. They don't have the luxury of either being hired to work specifically inside the municipality or having been elected to represent the citizens. And so, with that in mind, I think it's not an unwillingness to have somebody included. It's, I think it puts the person or persons in a difficult position during the process, and I think it extends the process because there are things that you need to do to help catch them up. I'm fine with however the board makes a suggestion, I'm just airing, you know, what my opinion is on this. Bob ultimately has to decide how he's going to do it because it's his process and it's his hire. And I'm respectful of everybody else's opinion, I'm just sharing mine, that I think that it puts undue stress on whoever you select, and it puts stress on the situation itself towards what we're all looking for, which is the best possible outcome. Relative to the second position, second question, it strikes me that the idea that the liaisons who are, in my own case, I've worked closely for four or five years, have been involved not directly but peripherally, as we made decisions around things like having a deputy chief, having a both, in both public safety areas, making that decision to hire those people, then, you know, my opportunity to have worked closely from this board with two chiefs and two deputy chiefs, and outside of this board over the course of 30 years, highly interactive because of my other activities with police and fire, and specifically around the chief and the deputy chief. So, from that perspective, you know, I've got that kind of experience and have actually been looking forward to the opportunity to represent our board in this process. Professionally speaking, separately from my work on this select board over the course of the last five and a half years, my interview acumen, I've probably interviewed a thousand people in the course of a business career, and that's probably an underestimation. So my interview skills tend to be strong, my opportunities and instincts to observe what's going on are also strong. And I do think, and I was really looking forward to Ann's suggestion of she and I working together on a community listening endeavor, I thought that was a perfect way to get the input to come in. And I thought, when Bob suggested that the two liaisons would work on his selection committee, it made logical sense to me, and hope that goes forward. I will tell you that I'm very interested in doing this, and I think that I'm well-equipped to be able to represent all five of us, along with a working partner, and I think Ann's background really lends itself in that same direction, so.
All right. So I guess I'm the only one who hasn't weighed in. So I was the liaison to public safety last year, something I enjoyed, and...
You did that with me.
I did.
Yes.
And so, you know, I think this is a unique situation from a liaison perspective as far as the role of the liaison is not necessarily to make decisions on behalf of the board or to represent the board. The role of the liaison has generally, and this is actually something we talked about before shortly after the elections, which is you liaise with whoever you are assigned to, communication goes both ways. And so I think that in that regard, representing the board as far as the selection committee is beyond the scope, strictly speaking, of the liaisons. And at that point, it should be up to discussion with the broader board to determine who represents us on that, understanding that technically falls under Bob, but you'd still be speaking essentially on behalf of the rest of the board, not as a subcommittee, but simply as individuals. So with that said, you know, this is something I have a particular interest in. I don't know, Mark and Andy, where the two of you stand. It's absolutely something I would be wanting to do, as far as serving on the selection committee. That's my sense.
Yeah. Mark?
I mean, I would be happy to serve, but I don't feel that I have to. In other words, I'm available, but I'm not suggesting that I am necessarily the person to participate. I think that any of the five of us would do a little good job of it, I'm not concerned with that. I think the real question is, what's the structure that we want? Does it make sense to have you as chair participating specifically? I guess that's one of the questions.
I think generally speaking, the chair has, you know, for obvious reasons, Bob chose Chuck, who is now the chair of the school committee. Historically speaking, the chair and/or the vice chair have been chosen for those types of roles.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that probably is the most sensible route as one, but to have another person as well.
Yeah. I would be interested, but due to job, my job, I couldn't participate per Bob's explanation of the job requirement. You know, it's funny, I do think we should have the chair participate, but obviously both of you would do a great job as well, as you explained. So, yeah, how do we?
Does it make sense for the, you know, does it make sense for the chair and the vice chair to take on that role? As much as I am interested personally, I wanted this to be a process that everyone feels good about, and...
Does that work for all of us, John and myself?
Fine with that.
Yeah, reluctantly, because I, you know, I hate to lose John, I hate to lose you, but I also wanted Vanessa involved, so I can work with everybody sitting up here. You know that, all of you know that.
Bob?
Just a comment that this is an example of something where a third member can never sit in for the two that are chosen. So if someone's not available, they're not available. We can't go to a third member during this process, just to make that clear.
Understood. Okay. All right, so, we're only about 25 minutes behind schedule. Unless there's any other questions as far as the police chief hiring process, all right. So next, yeah, let's take a two-minute break. So next, yeah, let's take a two-minute break. Select Board's back in session, but next on the agenda, we will open a new hearing and continue a hearing regarding alleged violations of sound to underaged minors by Bay State Liquor. So, Mark, first, we're going to start with opening the new hearing, and then we will continue the hearing from July, whatever date that was. What was the previous one? July?
July 9th.
Thank you, from July 9th. All right.
Okay. To the inhabitants of Town of Reading, please take notice that the Select Board has the licensing authority for the Town of Reading to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 27, 2019, at 8:00 PM in the Select Board's meeting room, Town Hall, 16 Mall Street, Reading, Massachusetts. To show cause why HT Reading Liquors LLC, VDA, Bay State Liquors, retail package store license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, should not be modified, suspended, or revoked for violating Section 3.1.4, which requires licensed businesses to conduct their business in accordance with the terms of the Select Board policies, and Section 3.2.2.5, which requires all managers, assistant managers, bouncers, bartenders, and employees permitted to sell or serve alcoholic beverages to successfully complete an approved program designed to train employees to avoid selling or serving to intoxicated persons and minors, and that all such persons required to successfully complete an alcohol management or serve a training course be successfully retained, retrained, excuse me, prior to the end of the certification period. All interested parties may appear in person, may submit their comments in writing, and may email comments to town manager, sci.reading.na.us, by order of Robert W. Luscher, Town Manager.
All right. Do we need a second on that?
No, it's just opening the hearing.
Motion to hearing, all right. So do we have a motion to reopen the hearing? Are we simply reopening?
If we need a motion, we'd be happy to.
Let's just continue.
We're just continuing, all right. And we are continuing the hearing from the Select Board meeting on July 9th. Before we get started, I'd like to enter into testimony the RCTV feed from our previous meeting on July 9th, where additional testimony had been held. So for clarification purposes, the initial hearing had two alleged violations. Tonight, we are opening up for a third. The first two were in regard to state law. The one that we have opened this evening is to alleged violations of the Select Board policy. The abbreviated version of what, Mark, read. All right. So at this point, Ibra, we can open it up to testimony at your recommendation? Okay. First, we... Does the police have testimony regarding the alleged Select Board violations? Select Board policy violations? No, they do not. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Vanessa, you was going to say something.
All right. It's going to be that exact what we testified to last time?
Okay.
If that's okay, if not anything clarified, please let us know, but I think we're going to...
Keep with just my...
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So we will next hear from the licensee or their representative regarding the alleged violations to the Select Board policy.
Thank you.
Please.
Ladies and gentlemen, board members.
You can introduce yourself for the record, thank you.
Yes, Jim DeGiulio, 599 North Avenue, Wakefield, Mass. I'm an attorney for the licensee.
Thank you.
Are we, I'm sorry, are we doing the first, the continuation?
We will start with testimony for the alleged violation of the Select Board policy, which is in regards to the... Ibra, jump in here.
The TIPS train.
The TIPS train. Thank you.
So, Section 3.2.5 requires that all employees be certified in one of three, or one of two programs, or with the approval of the Select Board, a third program that the individual could identify, and they need to have that, completed that training within 30 days of their employment. And so there was testimony presented at the last hearing, which has been incorporated into this new hearing, that the licensee may not be in compliance with this provision.
Okay. Do you, as a representative, have testimony in regards to those allegations?
No testimony from the licensee. I don't know particularly what the allegation is in terms of when this alleged violation occurred. Was it multiple times? Was it once? Was it the individual that sold to the minor that we talked about the last time? Just a little bit confused about what dates we're talking about here and who we're talking about.
Bob or Ibra, can you clarify whether the licensee was informed of the alleged violations of the policy? Caitlin, yes?
Yes, sir.
He received notice, if that's what you're referring to? Notice of the hearing?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not contesting that he didn't receive notice. I'm just indicating that it doesn't indicate who particularly wasn't certified and what date the violation occurred.
John?
I think it's pretty clear. The last time you were here, you and your client both spoke to us about the fact that there were allegations regarding the state laws of two separate occasions where minors were served. I asked the question directly of you and your client, the licensee, whether or not the people in question that served on those two dates were TIPS-trained. I was told they were not. That was a direct violation of our policy. So what we're here to talk about relative to that policy violation, we know by previous testimony here, that the people that served those minors were not TIPS-trained. You told us that the last time you were here. So I guess the real question that I have is, are you changing your story on that, or is that true? Because if that's true, what you told us the last time, you're in direct violation of the Select Board policy.
Not changing the story at all. I don't recall any testimony regarding the individual the first time. I do recall you asking my client, or I believe this gentleman, Mr. Friedman, had asked my client, were any of the two that were there that night, I believe, that were there that night that sold to the young woman, were they TIPS-certified? And the answer was no. That's what I remember. And I reviewed the tape a number of times. So with regard to that, if that's what we're talking about, no, we're not changing our testimony. They were not TIPS-certified. However, as a matter of, and I'm glad you clarified in terms of what we were talking about here, the policy states that they have 30 days to certify. The testimony was the last time that this particular person who sold was temporary. Again, I use the word hanging around, friendly person, but we admitted that he served the alcohol. He was a server. But the policy allows 30 days. He was there for two weeks, so we don't believe that he was in violation, or there was a violation of that policy, because the 30 days had not expired. And we don't believe there's any evidence in the record to suggest that the 30, that he was outside the 30-day period.
Was he employed, this person employed? Did they get a paycheck?
You know, I didn't know that at the time. You asked at that time, I wasn't even sure was paid, was he ever paid?
No.
So you had a non-employee who was never on the payroll, and was never TIPS-trained, selling alcohol to the public, and in this case, to minors. Do I have that pretty correct?
He was a family member.
He's not an employee, he's not paid, he's not trained, yet you have him at your cash register, serving alcohol to the public, and in this case, to minors. Do I have that correct?
We admitted it the last time, he was an employee. He was an employee. He was a temporary employee.
But he's not on the payroll. He's not a person, I mean, what is it? Is he an employee? Is he not an employee?
It's a family member.
And when does he help? Does he help when he's in town? Did that happen only for two weeks? Did that happen a month ago, six weeks ago, before this happened? I mean, it's so unclear.
Thank you, John. So as a point of clarification, there are two alleged violations. One is on May 18th, the other is on May 30th. The gentleman in question, who was, as you say, a temporary employee, was that the same seller, same person at the register for both of those occasions?
We don't know that. And I explained to the board that when we reviewed the tape to see who that person was on that earlier date, the tape records over itself after 30 days. So by the time my client got the notice from the board, if you look at the date of the notice, the 30 days had expired from that first date. However, I did indicate to the board that the police had the opportunity to look at the tape, and perhaps they saw who that person was, but we didn't know, and we tried to ascertain that person. We weren't able to do that because of the tape. So, and that's what I stated the last time we were here.
Thank you. Do we know who the individual was who was selling the alcohol allegedly to minors on the 18th?
No.
Okay. So we only know of the person on the 30th?
That's a question. So has that particular person been there, working and serving before or after?
He was fired right after we learned about this incident. Again, we...
How about before?
Before...
Before the 18th? Before the first date? Was he sometimes serving alcohol to people before then?
No, he was there for, well, I'm not sure I understand your question. He was there for approximately two weeks.
And that's the window, do we know?
Yes.
18th through 30th, roughly?
That's what my client tells me.
That's correct.
So the person who was there on the 18th was fired, correct? That's temporary?
Is the 18th the second date?
No, the 30th is the second date. It was May 18th and May 30th.
No, the person on the 30th was fired. We could not ascertain who the employee was on the 18th, and again, because of the tape, and we thought perhaps the police would be able to do that.
Thank you. John?
So I have a question about that, and for you or for your client. Do you maintain payroll records for employees?
Yes.
Okay, so that's good. And I'm assuming, are they paid by the hour, or are they paid by the shift? How are they paid?
Oh, paid hourly.
Okay. So in order to be paid hourly, they have to clock in somewhere. So this is pretty simple arithmetic. You go back to the 18th, you look at the payroll records, you look at the time in question, and it will tell you exactly who was working, wouldn't it?
And it could have been one or more people.
Okay. Were they, was anybody, if there were two people on shift at that time, were either of them TIPS-trained?
Well, Mr. Halsey, I apologize for interrupting you, but my client isn't testifying tonight. He had testified the last time we were here, and unfortunately, he was honest, he told you the truth, and unfortunately, his words are now being used against him. So he has given his testimony, and that is his testimony.
So unfortunately, he was honest. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
No, no, unfortunately, he was honest. Unfortunately, because his words are now being used against him, he is...
So this is a hearing about the violations against the Select Board policies, which I know specifically your client is aware of, because the day that he was granted that license, I had a direct conversation with him in this room about TIPS-training, and I'm sure he mentioned that he recalled that the last time we talked.
He did.
Now, going forward, I think it is imperative that somebody testify on his behalf, either you or your client, as to the question here of the Select Board's policy. Now, the Select Board's policy is separate from what went on last time. I mean, it's pretty simple to ascertain that it was one of two people, that it sounds like if there were two people on the 18th, and because we don't have a videotape, we can't be certain which of them actually served the alcohol to the minor, but there were two people. So my question is a simple one. We know that it could have been, you know, the person who doesn't, isn't TIPS-trained. We know that there was such a person who supposedly was only here for two weeks, which I guess started on the 17th and ended on the 30th, because that maybe is the two weeks in question that the person worked there. But there was a second person, you're telling me, that could have served on the 18th. So my question, directly to either you or to your client, is, was the second person who was on shift that night, TIPS-trained?
Well, again, I just want to make the record clear. I said it could have been one or more people. I'm not saying it was more. If I could have a moment, I could speak with my client, and maybe we can clarify this and get the answer? Unfortunately, he does not have that answer.
So it seems like the answer to, do we know who served on May 18th, potentially violating Select Board policy, the answer is that there is an unknown factor there. For May 30th, we do in fact know that the person who served the alcohol was not TIPS-trained. However, the applicant is claiming that he had only served for two weeks. We do not have any... My interpretation is, given the information, as the violation of the Select Board policy, we have no, the policy was violated. For this particular, note that there are three questions before us. One of them is Select Board policy violations. The other two are the alleged violations on the 18th and 30th, which we will take up separately. So we are limited in the information that we have available to us. I'm interested in what the rest of the board has to say, but I don't, if we're going strictly by the law, we cannot...
And may I just add, everyone that now will be serving alcohol is TM-certified, and we have some of the records. Some of them were mailed directly to the individual, so we don't have all of them. But I believe your regulations require that we file them with the board, and that will be done. They are all TM-certified.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah. On August 19th, 2019, in our packet, we have a letter from Town Council advising the board on the issue, a number of issues, the three that you stated. But the one that we're currently discussing, and I'd just like to read the sentence, or the two sentences he wrote. "The same standard of review applies to violations of the Select Board policies. Thus, if substantial evidence presented in the record demonstrate that individuals who have been employed more than 30 days by the licensee are not properly trained, the Select Board may find that licensee violated its policies." And we don't seem to have met that bar.
Other thoughts?
Yes. I think that we don't have sufficient information to come to that conclusion. You know, I would say this, that the hearing on this particular topic needs to be continued, and here's why I say that. We need to have the employment records of who was working on July 18th. I'm sure, I know you have to have those, okay? You know who works for you, you pay them. I'm sure you're complying with all the state tax laws as far as that's concerned. I'm certain of that. Therefore, even though it's understandable that you wouldn't have that information on the top of your head, or, you know, maybe even in a file that you're carrying with you tonight, even though this is what we're talking about, I understand that. But I do know those records exist, and I would like, I am very interested to know, on the 18th, who was doing the serving. Now, I get that the videotape does not allow us to know which of several people who might have been working that night actually dispensed the alcohol. But what, to the point of what Andy just read, the Select Board policy is that all employees serving alcohol in the establishment in question have to have the appropriate training within 30 days of their employment. So what I'm interested to know, and I suggest we continue this hearing, I want to know who was working the night of the 18th, how long they've been working. I want their employment records. And I also am interested to know, the last time we were here, we were told by the licensee that he was the only person that was licensed, or that was trained and certified. Okay, I could have that wrong, but I'm, the suggestion... Okay, I could have that wrong, but I'm, the suggestion was that not everyone had been trained, okay? That not everyone had been trained. So, let me not be, you know, I don't want to jump to a conclusion. I'd rather have the actual information, and I know that information is available. So, I don't want to come to a conclusion on this hearing, this portion of the hearing that we opened tonight about Select Board policy, until we see those employment records and understand, forget who sold the alcohol to the minor on the 18th. I want to know how many employees worked there, for how long, and who was TIPS-trained and who wasn't, because that is the question. The quintessential question of this hearing is whether or not that's been accomplished. And so, I don't think we can ascertain that information tonight.
Thank you, John. Anne, Mark, do you have thoughts on this?
I think John's point is very well taken. The point of this hearing is to be able to respond to these questions, and we're not, we're not in a position to respond to them. Doesn't mean that we have to find that we don't have evidence, it means we have to get the evidence.
And I would say to that, as you know, the burden is on the Board. The Board has noticed this. The Board has made this allegation. And this statute is also a criminal statute. So, now, you're putting my client in a situation. He wants to cooperate. As I said, he came here, he was under oath, he answered all your questions honestly, and those questions, those answers are now being used against him to alleged separate violation. But that's, it's also a criminal violation. So, for him to give evidence against himself, I would advise him not to do that, because it's a criminal statute, and a person could be prosecuted.
And I would like to hear from our Town Council. I believe we're talking about a violation of a Select Board policy, not a criminal indictment.
Okay, can we, can you weigh-
Right, so, there are, sorry.
Can I, can I just add something? The way your policy reads is, we have to have the TIPS or other certification on file, not just that it exists, we have to have it on file. We have one record on file for one individual, and that expired July 18, 2019.
July 8th.
Oh, sorry, July 8th, 2019. We have nothing else on file.
So, there's zero people certified right now? Evra, can you weigh in as to the criminal implication here?
Yeah, so, we have combined both of the hearings, so it is within his right to refuse to provide testimony on that. If the Board continues the hearing, we can look into what additional evidence we are able to collect. I do, I do understand that we've already noticed the hearing, so typically, we like to collect all the evidence before we open hearings. It's sort of unusual to use this as an open process. It's been a unique situation, because during the last hearing, we learned that few of the employees were TIPS-certified. But it seems like Caitlin does have additional evidence that the Board may want to consider and enter into evidence.
Can you clarify for us now, if anyone currently employed and serving alcohol is TIPS or TAM-certified, is that the other?
TAM is for the package stores, TIPS is for like restaurants.
Okay. Can you clarify if anyone is currently TAM-certified?
Yes, every employee is TAM-certified, and the reason he chose TAM was because he had a choice under your policy, TIPS or TAM. And I've taken TIPS, so I know a little bit, a long time ago, know a little bit about it. And the TIPS program focuses heavily on service of alcohol and looking for signs of intoxication, how to handle intoxicated people. And the TAM's program is more geared, my understanding, and I've never taken that program, it's more geared for package stores. So, he believed that that was the best program, but-
That's fine.
And as I said, they will be filed, all of those certifications.
I have a question on the filing. It says in our policy, the licensee shall certify annually to the Select Board at the time of renewal of the license that it satisfies this requirement. Certificates shall be kept on file, doesn't state where and available for inspection upon request. So, I'd like Town Council's opinion on this. It says certificates shall be kept on file and available for inspection upon request. Does that mean the store keeps it on file, and they're available for inspection upon request? Or does that mean the town keeps the certificates on file and they are available?
So, my, the way I read this is that there's certification that's part of the renewal package, and Caitlin and Bob can speak to it more, and that that includes both the certification and the actual certificate, so, but-
They give it to us every year. We get a copy. They can keep the originals, we get a copy of their TIPS every renewal season, and they go into their file, so that we can go back every year. I pull out a packet of the information they're supposed to give us every single year, and it's supposed to have every employee and their TIPS certifications, and on it says when they expire, when they expire. Supposed to give us new ones, but we ask for them every year, anyway.
So, we wouldn't expect to have the new one until the new applicant's season?
We would. I mean, there's, we're coming upon renewal, but this expired in July, so we should have a new one. But when they gave us this, it was still accurate, and it expired.
Caitlin, thank you. As a point of clarification, for all of the liquor licenses that we issue, from a general practice perspective, how timely are people in submitting them prior to their expiration date?
They're good for years, so-
I mean, do we generally chase down businesses who haven't submitted this? So, do we require it as-
Clear.
I'm asking, as we review these annually, and this might be a better question for Bob, do they, are they required as part of that process to submit them?
Yes.
And that takes place in the fall, correct?
We're getting them to do them right now.
Okay. So, presumably, the licenses, the training are not necessarily all conducted at the same time, correct?
I'm sure that's right.
All right. So, we ask essentially that their paperwork be in order before they ask for renewal.
Correct.
So, there's a little bit of a window there.
Well, they're always supposed to be current. There never's supposed to be a time when this has expired and they're have to go to another training. They're supposed to be always, and once, I believe, once they take the test the first time, it's much easier to keep it up to date. So, they're always supposed to be up to date. So, when we ask for them every year, there shouldn't be no lack of time, where there should be no certificate.
But there is a scenario in which they could have the certificate-
They could have it and-
And just we at the town don't have it.
Yes, I suppose that.
Okay. John?
I have a question. So, at the, maybe you have this information with you, maybe you don't. And it would be understandable if you didn't. At the last renewal of this liquor license-
Yes.
How many individuals were certified? And could you give me the name of that person?
So Hill, Chris Hill.
And who was that?
That was the last time he had testified that So Hill is a relative?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's, there was one person who was a relative, who was certified in the last packet. So theoretically, anybody that had been working there, other than this person, for 30 days or longer, was not on record with us at all. And last December, when we renewed this, this person was the only person certified to be able to dispense alcohol across the counter at that place of business. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
And so, if that's the case, it seems to me, I mean, is it possible that that person was, I mean, does that person do all the work? Obviously not.
Well, hold, John, I want to take a step back here. So, again, the issue before us is three alleged violations. One for the Select Board policy, and two for selling to, allegedly selling to minors on May 18th and May 30th, 2019. So, we need to determine as a Board if we think violations occurred on these three instances, and we need to take them independently. All right. Are there additional specific questions that we have for the licensee's representative in regards to, let's take them one at a time, the Select Board policy violations?
I have no more questions. I have the information I need.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
You said we have to take these questions individually for each date, but we don't actually have a date attached to the, to the alleged violation of the Select Board policy. Correct?
Right. So, what I think Vanessa means is, we have to break it down into three separate votes. So, you're going to vote once on the first sale to minor, once on the second sale to minor, and then once on whether the Select Board's policies have been violated. We don't need to associate it with a specific date, though there does seem to be a date circulating the fact reflected in them.
Okay.
Before you ask the question, John suggested obtaining the employment records of the store to determine whether or not, to get, to determine whether or not we can demonstrate that the policy has been violated, is that-
Essentially, but Council has told us that they won't provide that, because he feels it's self-incriminating. However, you know, all we have to look at is, on July 8th, there were zero on file. Today, there are zero on file. And so, to me, it's a clear-cut case of a violation that probably happened on July 9th.
So, John, I just, sorry, if I could just make one point. So, the policy itself doesn't actually require that when a new TAM certificate is issued, that it be refiled. The requirement is that annually, you provide the certificate, and that employees are properly trained, and those trainings are kept up to date.
Thank you. As a point of clarification, Andy, you have the policy handy?
I do.
Okay. Can you clarify whether there are indications for penalties for violating the Select Board policy? Or?
No.
I'm curious if any indicator or not. I don't have the front.
So, is it, I think liquor liability in here, no? Yeah, that's pretty much true. Just tables. Didn't Town Council answer that?
Did you answer that?
In the letter?
Right.
First, the first offense was-
One to five days.
One to five days suspension.
But is that part of our policy, or is that part of the state law violation?
So, your policy, so your policy has established suggested orders for different levels of offenses, and this applies to any violation, whether it's a state violation or a violation of your Select Board policies. Section 3.2.4.2.
Got it. All right. So-
Ma'am Chair, because a new issue, I believe, has been raised, may I address it very briefly? So, I understand that there might now be a new allegation that might, different violation, which would be filing with the Board. However, the notice does not say that at all. When you talk about violating the policies, yes, that provision is in the policies, but it further goes on to say, thus, failed to comply with the policies, and thus, section 3.1.4 are statements that you made. So, the notice is notifying us that there's an alleged violation of the TIPS, not persons not being certified, not not filing. So, I don't believe that's an issue before the Board. I would also mention that, and I think Council will agree with me, that the penalties are suggested, they're not mandatory, they're a guideline.
Yeah, okay. So, there's been mention of potentially extending this hearing on the alleged violations of the Select Board policy. I am, as one member, not inclined to go that route. I would rather vote this evening on that particular issue. Are there other thoughts on the continuance or not of the alleged violation of the Select Board policy?
I think that we don't have information that would be necessary, the employment records, particularly because this is tied to a point in time within 30 days. It's hard to find a violation without, but it sounds like they would not be provided. She don't know that a continuation for us from an evidentiary standpoint, if that evidence were to be provided, it sounds like it would not be. So, I'm disinclined to move for a continuation.
Okay.
I'm disinclined to move for a continuation. I think that we have the information, I think, that we're going to have, and I think we move forward based on that.
This evening?
This evening.
Andy?
I'd like to say that Anne stole every single word out of my mouth, and I agree. You know, I'm in concurrence with what she said.
Okay. So, it seems we're disinclined to continue, which means we would need to vote this evening on whether or not there was violation of the Select Board policy, or in regards to the 30-day requirement to have TIPS or TAMs training. So, unless there's any further discussion on that particular point, we can close the hearing for that particular item.
Move that the Board close the hearing regarding Bay State Liquors alleged violations.
Thank you. Bob, is there public comment?
No second amendment.
All right. We can have a second now.
Sorry. Is the motion to close both hearings, or is it to just close the specific hearing on the Select Board's policies that we should specify?
It should just be on the Select Board policy.
Okay. Move that the Board close the hearing on the Select Board policy regarding Bay State Liquors alleged violations.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. So, now, do we have a motion?
Now, discussion?
We're going to have more?
Well, that was a public hearing. When we closed the public hearing, the select, the members of the Select Board have a discussion as to where we're going and why we're going to get there, how we're going to get there, and what their opinions are. I mean, you have to have a discussion, don't you?
Vanessa, did you want to take these, finish these separately? What was your intention?
We have been, it has been requested that we handle them individually.
And that vote on them, you know, at the end of, at the end of the hearing, vote on them, and then move to the next one?
Six, one, half dozen of there, unless-
Right, it doesn't matter. You could continue taking testimony related to the sale to a minor, or you can discuss the matter related to the Select Board policy alleged violation, and then vote on that. It's really up to the Board's discretion.
I think, I'll leave it up to the Chair, which you want to do.
I'd be inclined to finish with this one before moving on to the next one.
I just want to reserve the right to have discussion before we vote on any penalties or-
So, oh, the voting on penalties is a separate vote.
I understand that.
So, all right. So, discussion on whether we believe an alleged violation occurred of the Select Board policies.
I have a question for Town Council. Could you remind us of the standard of proof?
Yeah, so, it's substantial evidence in this case, yeah.
Can you translate that for the non-lawyers?
Yeah, yeah. So, substantial evidence, I just want to make sure we're citing the case correctly. Is such evidence as a reasonable mind might accept as adequate to support a conclusion? And we get that from Embers of Salisbury v. ABCC.
And that's, that's for the violation of the Select Board policy?
Exactly. It would be for a violation of Select Board policy as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Discussion. Do we believe a violation of the Select Board policy occurred, given what we heard this evening?
Based on what I just heard, Vera tell us, and what I heard about the existing file, in my opinion, there's no question that our Board, that our, that our policy's been violated.
Okay.
And I would vote in that direction, that our policy has been violated.
Other opinions?
Same opinion, basically. I think that the information, excuse me, the information we have is that there's only one person who was trained on the date of the alleged violation. The evidence that we do have indicates that even if that was the person serving, they weren't certified. So, it seems clear to me that there is a violation of our policy right there, and we'd be voting in that direction.
Other thoughts?
All right. I'd like to note that in that case, that person has 30 days to certify, and, and the individual was there for two, two weeks. So, I don't think we can apply that-
No one was certified, including full-time employees.
Well, I think the struggle is that we have no proof whether someone was certified or not.
Yeah.
Because the, there was no paperwork filed with the town, and so, it is possible that they were certified, we were just, we as the town were unaware of it.
There's the opportunity to provide that information that hasn't been taken advantage of.
And, yeah-
Well, that's, to me, that's substantial, that would be the substantial evidence that would make or break the case. Also, you know, the reasonable person standard. That, in my mind, it rings of sort of beyond a reasonable doubt. You have to be pretty certain that the, there's substantial evidence to suggest that they violated our policy here.
Yeah, so I would say that beyond a reasonable doubt is a higher standard than substantial evidence.
Thank you.
It's not a murder.
Probably.
And we have that. I take the honest, probably a lot higher. But even that being said, I, I think that there is strong circumstantial evidence, but I don't, I, I'm inclined to vote not, in, in terms of not finding a violation, just because we, what we have, I think, solid evidence of is that there was someone who was not TIP certified, serving, who had been there for two weeks, and our policy allows for 30, for someone to be certified within 30 days. And we know that there was only one person at the, who was certified at the time that, of annual certification, but that was also a finite point in time. So I think the timing and the evidence are such that it's, for me, it's insufficient.
So I'm inclined to agree with Ann here. I think the, my instinct is to say that there probably was a violation, given the evidence that was presented to us. I do not feel that we have enough concrete evidence to vote in that direction. So I would be inclined to say there was no violation, even though, for a practical perspective, you know. I, I think it's clear that there was. I just don't, there's enough evidence to indicate. Please.
I think that reasonability, and we talk about a renewal with one person being certified with an expectation that that person theoretically would have to be, is there a violation or not? Well, unless one person was manning that liquor store from last December till the current question, I think it's unreasonable to think that that one person could have done that whole thing by themselves, given the hours that that's open and so forth. And I think, based on that, it's clear evidence that our policy's been violated. And I think, you know, it's, it's incidental that we happen to have two other violations that is what has brought this to our attention. So I think that you got to erase the discussion of the 18th and the 30th from whether or not there's been a violation of the selectman's policy. And in my opinion, mine only, if we have a renewal with one person, I doubt that that person has been running that liquor store 100% by themselves from the time of renewal to any point in time. And that, to me, is a clear violation of our policy.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion before we vote on whether or not there was a violation that occurred of the select board?
Just one point. I think it would be very useful if we had the employment records to see at the time of renewal, who had been working there. I don't know how much turnover there is, if, you know, you know, this, the person who's, who would be in violation if it had been over 30 days, had only been there two weeks, how much turnover is in this, is in this establishment. So I feel like I can't, I can't come to, remind me again of the, the standard. I can't.
Substantial evidence.
Substantial evidence. I feel like we don't have that.
Okay. All right. So, do we have a motion? Well, first, we need to agree, do we have, so I know where Mark and John and myself stand. Andy, I am unclear on where you stand on this. And the reason I ask is because we need to have a motion one way or the other.
Right. I think it's important for the public to hear that the select board, it does, the members who have expressed a desire not to find them in violation of our select board policies, that the select board doesn't, takes these sale of alcohol to minors very seriously. I have kids who've recently graduated from high school. It's a problem in town. They buy, kids have access to alcohol in town, underage kids. It's, it's not a, it's, it's no secret. So I don't feel, please don't take what I'm about to say as going soft on this problem. I think we, what this says to me is we, our efforts need to be redoubled in this area with the help from the police department. And that, in this case, convince myself to say that we have substantial evidence to find them in violation.
Okay. So, and that, so I'm reading through the motions to, just to make sure, because we have numerous. Is it 1C1?
I think it's move that the board find Bay State Liquors not in violation of select board policy, section 3.2.2.5 and section 3.1.4. Okay.
Yeah, you could also take it in the affirmative, and if it fails, it's the same thing as the denial. It's however the board wants to frame the motion.
How is it written? Quick, say it.
That they find them in violation.
Right.
It's the page two, the last.
Right. So that's a fine motion. You can make that motion, and if it fails, it, it fails.
All right. So can you make the motion? We'll have a second, and then we'll clarify exactly what we're voting on.
Move that the board find Bay State Liquors in violation of select board policy, section 3.2.2.5 and section 3.1.4.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So to clarify before we vote, if you vote in favor of this motion, you are saying that Bay State Liquors was in violation of the select board policy noted. Clear?
Clear.
All right. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Opposed? Good motion. Okay, does not carry. All right. So now we will move on to the alleged violation of selling to minors on May 18th. So we have already heard testimony on July 9th. Is there any additional testimony that the licensee representative would like to provide?
Yes, Madam Chair. At the last hearing, I had mentioned that we had taken a screenshot of the video that we did have. I believe it was the 30th or 31st, the later one. And I didn't know what I did with the photographs. I did leave them at my client's office, so I do have them. And I thought they would be important for you to see. And again, Mr. Halsey, I know you were very concerned about our position regarding how the person looks, and I understand that, and that's, but that wasn't what we relied upon. My client carded these two individuals. These two individuals told the police that they were carded. And the second individual told the police that she was carded and that they both had fake IDs. And the officer testified, and I don't believe it's in the report, but the officer testified, the detective, I believe, testified that the, the woman who is depicted in this picture, this was the second incident, had indicated that she had been carded in the past, but after a while, they stopped carding her. So I think it's important to know that it wasn't just a visual that my client did. They had a written policy. They carded people. They carded these particular individuals. Not on that particular night, but the law doesn't require that, and the board's policy doesn't require that. So that's why I think seeing a visual of this person, who we know, we know now was 20 years old, if, if it was obvious to my client that this person, from the looks, looked extremely young, then I would say, okay. But that's why I think it's important, and I wanted to present these the last time, and I didn't have them with me, if I could put them into the record.
Yes. Can I circulate? John?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So you're telling me that this person had been carded on other occasions?
That's, the police told us that.
Okay. And I read that police report as well, that this person indicated that at a certain point in time, they'd used fake identification and had presented it, and that they no longer needed to do that because apparently they were known. So my question about the person on July 30th, how long did he know them? Two weeks, 30 days? I got the impression in reading the police report that this had, you know, that this person had been coming there for quite some time, and that no longer needed to be carded. And I'm guessing, if you don't card, you don't card at your own peril. And we, I think, agree and understand that, that you can make a decision that you're not going to card somebody. How they look is absolutely immaterial. But you can make that decision. You're not required by law, but you live with the consequences of that decision, I believe is the way this is written.
I, I agree with you. I, I don't agree that the way a person looks is not a relevant factor.
Well, fine, but you, you proceed at your own peril. If you decide that somebody looks old enough and you don't card them, and it turns out that that's not true, game, the game is over.
All right. Do we have a, everyone?
I just wanted to address some points that were made. I know I wrote it in the letter, but the last time around, it seemed like the standard that was being reiterated was that there had to be some type of knowing requirement that if the person, if the, if the person that was selling the alcohol to the minor in question didn't know that the minor was a minor, that that would relieve the, you know, would, would, would result in no violation under the statute. And as I explained in the letter, while that's the standard for furnishing alcohol to a minor, you have to knowingly furnish, that's not the standard for sale to a minor. The standard is different. And, you know, that the Supreme Judicial Court has said that there's no standard requirement, there's no knowledge requirement associated with sale to a minor. And the ABCC has reiterated that. And I think just as, as John, John just said, you know, the only way out of this type of violation is reasonable reliance on one of the six types of identification identified in section 34B of the statute. And so if, if that didn't occur, then, and you sold to a minor, you're, you're on the hook. And it's important to point out that there is case law. It's a, a mass appellate court, appellate court case, appeals court. They said that prior reliance on a fake ID on a different day didn't, wasn't enough. You have to card them every day to be able to rely on that protection that section 34B affords licensees. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from the board as far as the alleged violations on May 18th? And please note, again, we are taking these separately. So as far as the police reports go, we are reviewing only that of May 18th.
So on the 18th, they were carded, and the 31st, they were not?
Just a point of clarification, the picture that you're looking at is not the individual that was involved on the 18th, because you had stated earlier, there was no video available of the incident on the 18th, correct?
Yeah, I indicated that was the later incident.
Okay.
We believe.
Thank you.
That was what you're talking about, because the other evidence that you also just testified to was for both incidents or for the first incident?
With regard to?
With regard to someone saying that they had used an ID in the past, it was not asked for an ID.
I believe the police reports indicate that each of the individuals on the 18th and on the 30th, the 31st, had indicated that they had a fake ID and had used it in the past.
That would be correct for the first incident, but not the second incident.
Okay.
So that would be the individual that you're looking at is involved in the second incident. That individual never stated that they had been asked for ID in the past. He said they had an ID, but they were not, it was not requested.
On the 18th, it was not requested.
No, on the second date.
No, on the 30th.
30th.
Some of the issues get confused because you issued a picture of the individual involved on the second date, but if you're only discussing the first date right now, then I'm not sure why.
Not material.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I, that's the second incident. I thought you were taking both.
No, we, we need to, we need to separate them. All right, so we'll, we'll table the photo for now.
Yes.
All right. Does the board have any additional questions in regards to the alleged violations on the 18th?
I, just looking at the police report, I think, from the, from the 18th, it says the underage youth stated they were no longer being asked for ID by the staffs, so they no longer used any identification when purchasing alcohol.
Okay. Other questions on this side?
That was my question.
Yeah, okay.
So that was on the, that was the, or on the earlier date?
The 18th.
Yeah. So I guess my question for town council is, when it says, the only defense available to a charge of sale to a minor is whether the licensee reasonably relied on one of the six pieces.
Right.
Does that mean, does reasonably rely pertain to every time they have to show that license? Or that they show it 10 times and after that, they don't?
No, every time. So the reasonable standard comes into, let's say I'm a minor and I give you my older sister's ID and I look nothing like her, then it would be unreasonable for the licensee or the licensee's agent to rely on that case of identification. The, the section, section 34B was adopted, so, you know, licensees that are relying on really good fake identifications can rely on those and have that protection. But if the fake isn't good, it's clear that the individual presenting the fake isn't that individual, then that's not reasonable to rely on that.
So they have to present it every time they purchase?
Correct. And that, that was upheld in an appeals court case.
And the 18th was definitely, they were not carded. That's the way I understand the police report.
According to the police report, yes.
According to what the youth said.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. Before we open it up to public comment, is there any further discussion from the board on the May 18th? Okay. Is there any public comment? All right. Will close the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. We should, because this was all one hearing, we should now take evidence on the second alleged violation, then you'll close the hearing.
Oh, to be open them together? Okay. Okay. So shifting gears, we will now take evidence for the alleged violations on May 30th.
31st or 32nd?
It's the 30th. I know it says the 31st here, it should be the 30th. All right. Is there any additional evidence that the licensee's representative would like to enter?
No evidence, but I would like to address at the appropriate time, the standard of law to be applied, if I may.
Please.
So I, I'm not aware of the appellate court case that she's referring to. I did not receive a package, and I didn't expect to receive a package from council that was for, for your council. However, I just want to clarify, the statute that council's referring to is actually discussed on the ABCC website. And what it, what it says is that neither the State Liquor Control Act nor the regulations of ABCC require identification to be checked as a condition to selling or delivering alcohol beverages to any person. Each licensee is left to decide for itself what policy to establish on checking it. However, it goes on to say that while the licensee may choose to rely upon any form of identification to obtain proof of age, only these specific six forms provide a defense to a charge of service. So what, and, and that's in the statute. And what that means to me is that you're not in violation if you, if you don't ask for any one of this, for any one of the six, and you reasonably, as council had indicated, you know, didn't look like a different person, then you're protected by the statute. And, and this statute really is, is most often applied to drag shop cases where establishments are sued for liquor liability, and, and that's where it's applied mostly. But again, I just want to be clear that this, we don't have to, this statute says that if we asked for these identifications and we were reasonable, we're protected under this statute. However, it doesn't mean we're not protected because we didn't ask for one of these. And I think council will agree.
I would agree that the license, there's no obligation in the statute to ask for identification. But if you don't ask for identification, you're proceeding. but if you don't ask for identification, you're proceeding at your own risk. And so if you sell to a minor, that's something that you're risking. The only way to protect yourself from being found in violation, if you do sell to a minor, is to rely on one of those six forms of identification that's, you know, talked about on the ABCC's website and in Section 34B. You'll notice that out-of-state licenses aren't one of the six forms of identification that you can rely under, rely on under Section 34B. So you can definitely take a connecticut ID and rely on it, but if it's a fake, and it could be the best fake in the whole entire world, but if it's a fake and the individual's a minor, that doesn't get you the protection of Section 34B. So I, I'm.
All right.
Sorry, I meant, mentioned, so a little bit more on the law. So Mr. Halsey had asked me the last time if I had cases that I had cited the last time, and I did not have them available for the board, but I do have them, and I have the statute, Section 34, I have some notes of decision that are attached to that as well, and then I have the case that I cited the last time, which talks about the fact that specific intent is required for violation, it's not strict liability. And going to council's point regarding the knowingly and intentionally, the case does not distinguish between knowingly and intentionally, and I have the case here as well. But I also would like to point out that there's two parts to this statute, and the first part says that whoever makes the sale or delivery of alcohol beverage or alcohol to a person under the age of 21, and he, and it goes on to talk about the different sections of the, of the license, licenses, any such beverages or alcohol for use by a person, who he knows or has reason to believe is under 21 years of age. So that's a scienta requirement, that's a knowledge requirement, that's an intent requirement. That's in the first part of the statute. Then when you go to the second part of the statute, and then it goes on to say, or whoever furnishes any such beverage or alcohol for a person under the age of 21 shall be punished by a fine or imprisonment. And for the purposes of this section, and again, this is rules of construction on statutes, for purpose of this section, not this paragraph, but this Section 34, the word furnish shall mean to knowingly and intentionally supply, give or provide, or allow a person under the age of 21. So I would say that both parts of the statute, if, if council is distinguishing furnishing from selling, then if you, if you read the entire section, I believe that the scienta requirement does apply, and I think that case that I've attached to, it indicates that, but also if you look at the other section, it says that any such beverage or alcohol for use of a person who he knows or has reason to believe is under the age of 21. And I would also say that in, I believe it was 1997, it was a strict liability statute, and it was amended, and it was changed. And so I do have that law for each of the board members, if I may.
Would you like to enter that into evidence?
I would, please.
Okay, so noted. All right. We're about an hour over on our agenda, that's okay, and we've gone down a bit of a legalese rabbit hole, so. I'm going to bring it back to the issue before us, which is, where's board need to determine if there was an alleged, if there was a violation on May 30th where they in fact sold to minors? Any further discussion from the board before I open it up to public comment?
Yes, so what's difficult here is, you know, working through the back and forth of all these cases, which I appreciate that we have to do, but there's, there's one statement that I thought was very apt here. The central issue is whether the licensee acted with due care to prevent the sale of alcohol to minors. And I think from the testimony we've heard and what we've evaluated, I don't think that that's the case. And that I think requiring the showing of one of the six IDs, I think that even some of the statements made that your client has since done, which I applaud, and that many other liquor stores in town have already done, is to just make it clear how things are going to be treated. And from the evidence from the police, it doesn't feel to me that that is what took place at this time. And now I think we're gonna, there's some back and forth here, there's going to be some illegalese determination, but I, I find that that's, that's the problem that I have here, in that I read through that the, the sale, based on some case law that we have cited here as well, is different, and that it kind of pushes me very clearly toward the notion that violations did occur.
Thank you, Mark. Other thoughts, alleged violations of May 30th?
I think it's very clear that there was a violation.
Thank you. Anne, Andy?
I have another question for town council. Because I want to get this, this right, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, obviously. This handout that was just provided, is this the law in its current form?
I assume that's the law in its current form, it looks like it's downloaded from Westlaw. Yeah, and, thank you. And in the, in the letter that we circulated, we broke that law down, that statute down, you can see how we believe that there's the separate sections, and then the case law that we cited, including a recent SJC case, which said there's no scienta requirement for Section 34.
No scient, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no knowledge requirement.
Okay. Scienta, okay, got it. Yeah, because it's, it's tough for a layperson to look at this where it says, there's a lot of knowingly and intentionally here.
So please don't start reading again.
I, I promise, I will not. But there's also, it's, they seem to be or statements.
They are or statements.
So, and one of the statements does not include intentionally or knowingly, and so if it's an or statement, it just has to be one of the, one of them, has to be correct. Is that logic sound?
Correct, and, you know, I think the furnishing case that I believe council circulated, if it's Commonwealth's fee, oh, sorry. Yeah, so that was a case that didn't involve a licensee, so they weren't, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, so they were relying on that furnishing component, which required, that which had knowingly aspect to it, so that's why you do see that in the case. I mean, that's, that's clear, it's clear from the statute, it's clear from the case law, but, you know, what we see from ABCC decisions at their hearing level and, and review of ABCC decisions is that there's no knowing required, no knowledge is required when you're, when you're selling to a minor. You know, we have the defenses laid out in Section 34B, and as council said, you know, they don't have to ask for identification, but they do so at their own peril.
Anne, your thoughts?
I think, you know, we did hear from two different attorneys tonight, a different interpretation, in fact, that we're somewhat polar opposite to each other, one that there's, that there's a specific intent requirement, and the other that there's no scienta or intent at all requirement here, but I think it makes sense for us to rely on the advice of town council, which I think looking at this is sound, and looking at the, the distinction between selling to and furnishing, and that the case that you provide does seem to relate to furnishing, and that having a different kind of knowledge requirement.
Okay. All right. If I'm wrong, and I think, and I'll, I think a violation occurred. All right, so I will now open it up to public comment. All right, that was easy. Can we close the hearing?
Move that the board close the hearing regarding, excuse me, try again. Move that the board close the hearing regarding Bay State Liquors alleged violations.
Second.
Okay, in favor? Great, so now. Oh, it's been a long night, that's a lot of lawyer talk, all right.
One v. one?
One v. one, start with that.
First half, I think, all right, we'll break it.
Okay. So bear with me one moment, I just want to make sure what's at, what we're voting on here. All right, so now in front of us, we have two motions to determine whether violations occurred on the 18th and the. From the police, can you verify whether it was May 30th or May 31st? We have conflicting information. I just, I, I have, I've seen both dates, I want to make sure we get it correct. Are we looking at the date the violation occurred, or when the report was filed?
31st.
31st, thank you. All right. All right, so what's going to happen now is we're going to have a motion, we will have two separate motions, one for the 18th, one for the 31st. Once that determination is made on whether violations occurred on those two dates, we'll move into the penalty phase if there is one, if a violation is determined to have occurred. Mark, can I read the first one?
Move that the board find that Bay State Liquors violated master in the law, C138, Section 34, when it sold alcohol to a person less than 21 years of age on May 18th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So if you vote in favor of this motion, you are saying that a violation did occur on May 18th. Is there any further discussion? Okay. No? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Mark, if you can read the second.
Move that the board find that Bay State Liquors violated master in the law, C138, Section 34, when it sold alcohol to a person less than 21 years of age on May 31st, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So if you vote in favor of this motion, we are saying that a violation did occur on May 31st. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, now we move on to the penalty phase for these violations. We have concluded that two violations have taken place. Within our packet, there are guidelines for suspension. For those who aren't reading our lovely 180-page packet, the guidelines as laid out are as follows. First offense, one to five day suspension, second offense, six to 10 day suspension, third offense, 10 to 30 days, fourth offense, show cause, hearing for license revocation, revocation. So these are guidelines, we are not held to them. It is worth noting that the state has, that our guidelines are more punitive than the state recommendations, which are around, I think, one to three for the first, and four to six or so for the second. Is that correct, Andrea?
So I'm not aware of any formal state guidelines, so, but what we see from ABCC decisions is that the ABCC tends to be a little bit more lenient than municipalities across the board, and even, and more lenient than your policy establishes here. The ABCC especially tends to hold violations in advance, that's very common, you see that a lot.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Yeah.
All right. So as one point of clarification, we did find two violations from a penalty perspective. Are we required, under the law, to hold two separate penalties for these, or can we combine them?
Well, I would advise that you vote a specific penalty with each, associated with each violation. That will facilitate the appeal process if there, if there is an appeal process, that doesn't mean you can't stack them, so you can have them be consecut, consecutive, so if you have, you know, two days for the first violation and four days for the second, they could serve, you know, six consecutive days, but I would, I would advise separating them.
All right, okay, great, thank you. So discussion on suggested penalties for the violations?
I would suggest on the first violation, three days.
Other thoughts?
I have a slight concern that we should just talk through a little bit. I think our, our mission here is to be clear that this behavior is absolutely unacceptable, that it needs to be repaired, that it can't happen again. To me, these two violations occurred in rapid succession, and yes, they did happen, and it's two. But I am mindful not to put this business owner into a very tenuous position with the business at the same time, and would just be inclined to, you know, I think two or three days is probably appropriate on the first offense, and my gut is that may be appropriate on the, on the second. I don't think we want to be putting, you know, an owner's burden, you know, that could put this business owner out of business, that's not our intent. But it also is to be very clear that this is totally unacceptable.
Other thoughts?
I, I want to make it very clear that we didn't put this business owner in any position. This business owner put himself in this position.
Under discussion at the moment is the intended penalty, so I'd like to hear from all the board members before we proceed. Andy, Anne, do you have thoughts?
It is curious that we have two offenses at the same time, so the second offense, it's, this isn't the second time they're coming before us, so it feels, imposing a second offense penalty feels a little bit funny here, because it's almost like we have two first offenses rather than a first offense and then a second offense, because it's not as though they came before us, we imposed a penalty, and then they re-offended after having heard from us.
So what would be your recommendation?
I'm, I'm wondering if we should look at imposing two penalties in the first offense space.
Clarify what you mean by that.
You know, if we're, we're supposed to do two separate penalties.
We need one penalty for the first offense, if any, and one penalty for the second offense, if any.
And, but that we would use our guidelines on, on first offense to look at both, so the one to five day for both.
Oh, right, that's your recommendation, that we consider both first offenses, as opposed to?
Effectively, yes, yeah, but in the, in the penalty, in, imposing the penalty, yes.
Interesting, okay.
Just to go even further, how many days might you suggest?
For each.
I, you know, I, I agree with the values that Mark expressed in terms of sending a clear signal that this is not okay, and also not wanting to put the business owner out of the business. I don't know what that number is, and I, I think it would be helpful to, do you, do you have a sense of where that is? You know, how those values translate into a number, do we have?
Other than, you know, clearly severity goes up with more and more days that they're applying.
Right.
And it strikes me that, that one day is not sufficient, and that's why I kind of come up with the notion of two to three days. But in terms of, you know, I, I would hope that it's not so tenuous that a couple of days completely puts them out of business, that, that would signify a different problem.
Andy?
So my, my thought is, I, I hear what all of you have said, and good, good points. My question, I'd like to indicate our strong displeasure with this, these violations, and, and give inappropriate consequence, if you will. But I also want to make sure that that, that enforcement action sticks upon appeal. I don't want to be wasting a lot of town, town dollars in litigation over this issue. So I guess I would turn to town council and ask you, in your experience with the states, what, sort of what are the number of days in a case like this where there are two violations, but they were within the same month, I believe? And we were brought, it was brought to us all at once, and then the licensee was notified of all of this. What would, this, given those circumstances, what are the, what may be some typical penalties that would, that have? that would, that have borne up under the state, under, under an appeal?
Yeah, so, two points to that. The first is, it is typical that two offenses are brought to the, to a licensing authority at one time, so, you know, maybe atypical here in writing, but the ABCC does see multiple offenses in one proceeding fairly frequently. In terms of how many days, the ABCC will look to your policies. If you've established your policies through the proper process, which, which you have, then they'll look at those to determine whether they're reasonable. You know, we adopted these policies believing that they were reasonable, we think that these are defensible positions to be taking. Having said that, if there are no policies, what we typically see with an ABCC, you know, at the ABCC, is that the first offense may be held in abeyance, and then the second offense would be served. So you would see something like two to five days held in abeyance for the first offense, and, you know, three to seven days, with some of those days maybe held in abeyance, and some of those days to be served. But again, when you've established a policy, like you have, the ABCC will defer to the local licensing authority. So you should feel comfortable relying on what you have here. They are suggestions, so there is nothing wrong with taking a different position, as long as you're not arbitrary and, you know, go way above, but, you know, we feel confident that these are defensible.
And what sort of, what sort of conditions or extenuating circumstances, what sort of circumstances should the board take into account when assigning the severity of the penalty within the framework of our policy?
That's really for the board to decide, what we, you know, so I really want to leave that to your discretion. I can give you some guidance, what other communities look at, they look at, you know, what steps has the licensee taken since the, the offenses have been brought to the attention of the board, how willingly and cooperatively was the licensee during the process, time periods between offenses, especially when they're separate hearings, so, you know, it's, it's really, that's what we typically see, but there could be other things that this board finds relevant in making its decision, and I don't want to count that out, and it's your, it's your discretion, it's your policy.
So, Bob?
Town council can say whatever, I'm out of order here. Just to reflect on past discussions at this point and other hearings years ago, and discussions back and forth with the business owner, not all days are the same. The amount of days is a factor, but the day of the week is equally important, and Tuesday, Wednesday versus a Friday, Saturday have significant difference. So I just wanted to say that as past practice, that also was considered by the board, not just the number.
That's a valid point as well. So I think, I think a violation occurred. I do think we want to send a clear message to the community that we take this seriously, to Mark's point and Andy's. I also think it is necess- or, I also think we have an obligation to consider the efforts that the business owner has taken since this was raised. Namely, they have changed their policy, he has fired the individual who violated the law in serving to minors. It was not, it does not appear to be intentional in the sense of knowing he's a minor, or she is a minor. They have, they had carted the individual previously, they failed to do so in this instance, and I think that's where they got themselves into trouble. They were, the licensee was very forthcoming in his testimony at our previous meeting, and I, I think that should be considered in the number of days that we choose, and the days of the week. So as far as days, the number of days that we do for the first offense, I would suggest one or two possibly to be held in abeyance, and for the second offense, perhaps another two, possibly three. We can determine days of the week and whether or not they're held in abeyance, so that it is no more than three to five days.
That's around the space I was thinking of, I was note, I was noticing in town council's letter that in 2013, the board suspended Meadow Brook Golf Club's license for two days for a first offense sale, so two and two comes up to four, three to five, so. That's the space, that's around the space that feels right to me as well.
And what are your, could I ask you what your thoughts are in putting some in abeyance?
So, for clarification, both of this board, the many people we have in the audience tonight, and those at home, can you clarify what abeyance means? And how we may implement it, should we choose to?
Right, so abeyance basically means that the licensee doesn't have to serve those times unless the licensee violates again during the period that, that those days will be held in abeyance. So you could, for example, hold two days in abeyance for two years, and if the licensee violates again in two years, he would serve those two days plus whatever, you know, suspension would be imposed for the new violation. So it's a training type of tool.
Probation.
Yeah.
I might point out that, you know, we had a, not exactly the same situation, but a similar one, where we had multiple violations, and we sent a very loud and clear message. And half of the, over half of that message was upheld upon appeal with a balance held in abeyance, which I thought made some sense. I think, you know, I think that there has to be a clear message to this licensee and any others in this town, that this is not acceptable behavior. And I think that if you let them skate, that's a bad message. I think if you had three and five, and you hold the first one in abeyance, you have a five-day suspension that has to be served now, and a three-day suspension that needs to be held in abeyance for a period of 24 to 36 months, now you've sent a message, now there's a, the message is that there are two violations and five days are being served. Three others never have to be served if this licensee does what they're supposed to do. And so that's, that, that, the first one, the three days, never really gets served, it just sits there, but the second one at five sends a pretty clear message that this is not okay. Now, can it be Sunday through Thursday? I don't care. I mean, personally, but I do think that the number of days matters. I really feel very strongly that you can use both tools, the abeyance and our policy, to send a clear message that is not, that is painful but not onerous, and, you know, and holds out a strong incentive to uphold their, their licensee responsibilities to the law.
Other thoughts? On number of days and how they are held in abeyance, if at all?
Just like to check on some of the other.
So I, I think that, I think that the idea of the first violation being held in abeyance makes really good sense. And that the second one be something reasonable but substantial enough that it sends a clear message. So to me, whether that's four or five days, I think that's probably the right, the right sort of area, and I would be more comfortable with the three and five, than suggesting with the three in abeyance.
Three and five seems overly punitive to me, given the efforts that the licensee has taken to correct the behavior and actions going forward. The message is clearly already received. That's that a violation did in fact occur. So I would be inclined on more on the order of two days held in abeyance for the first offense, and two to three for the second offense. Four to five seems, well, it's a family-owned business.
So, to put this in perspective with tobacco, which, which, which is much more dangerous to human health and our well, as the numbers show, and this CDC numbers also show, the first offense for that in the Board of Health Regulations is a $100 fine. So, so there seems to be a disproportionate response to alcohol violations than to tobacco violations. That, that colors my thinking on this.
Interesting comparison.
I'm sorry?
So that's an interesting comparison.
Yeah. So with that, I would say two days in abeyance, two days to be served, and then, oh, I think that's what you suggested, isn't it? And, and then, um, yeah, I guess.
Anne, your thoughts, you're the only one who hasn't weighed in on numbers. I'm putting you on the spot.
Sure. What if we did two days for the first, and then could we get a majority for three to, three to four? I guess, I'm hearing five and two, so.
I would be fine with two in abeyance for the first, three for the second, if we determine the days of the week to be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which are presumably the least impactful.
I mean, I would assume from the perspective of the licensee that for their, the viability of their business, less is preferable for them, clearly, but is, could we hear what, what an, what the actual impact of a, a day? What would be the actual impact to the business?
And maybe at this point, I can let my client address it, I don't know if you're asking financially or otherwise, but I could tell you that in my experience, and I think probably you will share the same experience, you go to a store, it's closed, and you're wondering why it's closed, and it's closed the next day, and you're wondering why it's closed the next day, maybe you go to a different store, and you don't go back to that store, so it could actually have a lasting effect. But I would like to ask my client, and I would also, again, reiterate what you had mentioned earlier, that I think the purposes of a second offense, because it's an enhanced penalty, and the way the law applies it, whether it's an administrative hearing or in, in the courts, the purpose of an enhanced penalty is because you've been given a chance and you, and you violated it. So I would agree with the thinking that this should be treated as one offense, or if it's treated as two offenses, perhaps a warning on the first offense and a fine on the, on the, on the second. But again, he, he did not have a chance to correct this problem, he didn't even know about that first time, and as you said, it wasn't intentional, he did card this first, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but to impose an enhanced penalty when he didn't have the chance, I believe that's what is intended by this, and I think enhancing the penalty is not appropriate in this case, allows my client the impact that a closure would have on your, your business financially and otherwise.
So I, I think in the short term, I mean, the way I think about it is like a break even point, so 365 days in a year really, you know, for a lot of businesses, really a profit is only being made on the 30 days of, of the whole year, because the rest of it is to cover costs. So that's one thing, in the short term, in the long term, we are in a loose constant bars, because ultimately it's a habit, people who are in this area will come into our store, and if they just sit there, oh, this store is not, is not open, let's go somewhere else, and, and that does put a strain also, you know, if our business, if it does fall, we are also in the same unit as the National Food Exchange as well, and, and a lot of other businesses, and we are the flagship for the whole, for the whole unit. So, you know, we did, obviously, we would like, it, it would be like a smaller penalty, if possible.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to make one point about if we're closed and they don't know why we're closed. Your policies do require the, a notice be posted in the window specifying the reason for the closure.
They will know.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Quick, I, I think that this notion of abeyance, and having that as kind of an additional incentive, I think is a really good one. It actually makes the point stronger than, than anything else we can really do. So I think that, that if we're going to do something in the first, the 18th violation, I think having that in an abeyance period makes very, very good sense, and it becomes much stronger if there were to be another offense in the future, which I will present not. On the second one, I'm, you know, the notion of, of just a day or two seems a bit uncomfortable to me, I don't think that that is kind of responding to the situation, I think it's got to be a bit stronger. But to Andy's point, if it's something, you know, if it's probably three days, three to four days, I think is probably right, they would not be held in abeyance, but that would be intended to serve.
I'd be fine with three, four seems, I mean, to the point made earlier, that we are reviewing them separately, but the owner only knew of them once.
It does feel to me like effectively a first offense has been brought to us, and that is the one to five day, so if we did the first as two, and the, the first as two to be held in an abeyance, and the second as three, that feels, that feels like the right space.
So are we comfortable with two days in abeyance for the first offense and three days to be served for the second offense?
Are you asking me? No, I'm not comfortable with that at all. I think that sends a very bad message, I think that it doesn't, we did not put this licensee in this position, he put himself in this position, and I think it's our obligation to our citizens to send a clear message here, and I think that we're dancing around it, and we should be sending a clearer message than two and two or two and three, particularly since there's an abeyance opportunity with the first one. So I disagree with that.
Okay.
I think.
And Anne, then Bob?
Yeah, just quickly, we also have to, I mean, part of the penalty is the fact that we've had, just had to hire a lawyer and pay that lawyer to come here for two meetings. That is, in essence, penalizing him as well. No?
He will pay that lawyer again when he appeals. That's not our problem.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna time this out here, Bob, you had a comment?
Just a question for town council, does it make any legal difference which one is held in abeyance, first or second?
Uh, no, you could serve the first offense and hold the second in abeyance.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Alright, so, Avery, start off.
I was just gonna say, the rationale typically tends to be that, you know, the first offense is not like something, that was the first time they ever did it, so it will be a little bit more lenient, and then the second offense tends to be more punitive.
So, are we comfortable with two days in abeyance for the first offense and three days to be served for the second offense?
Uh, I need a.
Andy, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, Anne? John? We are now, okay.
Let me talk about the days, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine, uh, the days. I would be inclined for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I would say.
How much leeway do we have on the timing of the days?
You can specify them, whatever days you want, but one more point is, you do need to specify how long the days will be held in abeyance as well, so make sure that that's part of your decision. But yeah, you could do Saturday, Sunday, I mean, as Bob said, you can do them, whatever days you want.
Are there other thoughts on which three days?
Well, the thought I had was do them on days that kids don't have to get up and go to school the next day. Friday. You know, they could be vacation days, they, you know, they could be, you know, Friday, Friday or Saturday, or, yeah, or vacation days.
And they don't have to be consecutive, we have seen boards that have done five Saturdays in a row, so it, it is within your discretion to adopt a policy, a suspension that you feel is appropriate.
I'm inclined to rip the Band-Aid off and just do the three days consecutively.
If we held it longer in abeyance, John, would that make you more?
The days are, to me, the days are sending, are the message. The abeyance is, you know, a powerful tool to, I mean, you, you put three days in abeyance, and they never have to be served, never. I mean, I'm sure that this gentleman never wants to be here again for this, I'm certain of that. I think he opened his business in good faith, but there's a, there's a cost to doing business when you don't run it correctly, and that's what this is. The opportunity for the abeyance on the first offense, I think, is. The opportunity for the abeyance on the first offense, I think, is powerful for both, both parties included. One, to us, because it sends a message that, like, please don't do this again because it's going to be very costly. And for the licensee, it's dodging a bullet that doesn't have to be served, ever. And I think that that's powerful. I realize that this kind of is a first offense thing, but it's two first offenses. Our policy says you can for each one do one to five days. That's why I come up with the five days on the second one. I mean, serve your time. That's where I'm at.
We've rehashed this. The majority of the board is comfortable with the two days.
And ask me a question, and I give you an answer.
So I was thinking if we did a three day, excuse me, a three year abeyance versus a two year abeyance. So that would kind of like, you're on notice for a longer, a longer period of time?
I'd be fine with a two year abeyance.
I was suggesting three.
Oh, three.
In terms of sending a strong, you know, sending a stronger message?
There's a question from the public all out.
Steven Crook, 137 Bluson Street. I would, I would first argue that two violations have occurred about two weeks apart. To the first, to the first, I would suggest, if my memory serves me, and it may not, historically, historically, by over the last 20 years or so, this board has tended to dole out three days on first.
That is correct.
I would submit three days and two more held in abeyance for the first. With respect to the timing of the serving of it, if it occurred hypothetically, say on a weekday, I would say serve them over a weekday. If it's occurred across a weekend, then get served over a weekend. So it's at this similar time period. Second offense, though, I would suggest that you look at the 10 days in your policy for second offenses. Now, you may decide to hold several of those days in abeyance, but I would submit 10 days would not be unreasonable. Now, you might want to divide them and say, well, the two events occurred several weeks apart, we'll make him serve the two of them several weeks apart, so they're between them in between, in the interest of protecting the long-term viability of the organization. By the time you get to third offenses, and you make your call, we used to have a case where the second and the third offense occurred in what, 15 minutes of each other, if that, the violator ended up serving 50 days, that's five, zero.
That is.
Four, zero, 40 days more held in abeyance.
Upheld by the state board.
Upheld by the state board. I mean, I understand occasionally the mistake, but the fact that two occurred within a couple of weeks of each other, but at that time, the insufficient attention being paid to avoiding this kind of thing was not in a mere accident. And I think we want to send a strong message that we will not tolerate this, particularly where there's a second violation occurring. Now, if the owner cleans up his act and stays clean, over the course of the next couple of years or three years that you hold the same abeyance, he never has to serve the rest of that time. But I think you need to send a strong message. So I would just submit, perhaps the first one, five days, three served, two in abeyance, the second one 10 days, and at a minimum, I would suggest seven days served and the three held in abeyance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We still have to decide on these.
To Andy's point about not days when kids aren't going, that should we do like a school vacation week or something like that?
That's sort of what I was thinking. Yeah.
Well, we should be no February, right?
Yeah, they have, there's one in December. I think there's one around Thanksgiving as well, and that's one where many families, teenagers stay home for the Thanksgiving dinner, and then.
It's also the time adults buy the most stuff.
It is. It is true. I, yeah.
We could do a February vacation, so as not to hit the holidays, which I imagine is a time of heavy purchase. So to clarify, are we comfortable with the two and the three days? Is that what we're going with as a majority before we move forward on the exact timing of it?
The two held in abeyance.
Two held in abeyance for the first offense, three for the second offense to be served.
Can we do three, three years for the held in abeyance?
That seems long to me, but I'm open.
Well, gets the attention.
Okay, we'll go with three years.
In terms of sending the message that, you know.
That's fine. All right, so we'll go with.
Other businesses as well.
Right. We'll keep an eye on you for longer. All right. So we're in agreement on that, three years for, to be held in abeyance, two days to be held in abeyance for three years. As far as the timing of the three days that will be served?
I think waiting until February vacation is kind of long. So maybe back to your rip the Band-Aid off and do.
Second week. I mean, is there a recommended timing as far as should he choose to appeal?
Right, so he has five days to appeal. It's a very short appeal period under the statute. So communities, or licensing authorities handle this differently. Some just make it effective on receipt of the notice, which could go out tomorrow, for example. And then if the licensee chooses, they can go to court to try to get a preliminary injunction to stay those days while they appeal. The second option is the board builds into their vote an appeal period, so they'll say they're effective within six days of receipt of the notice unless an appeal is filed, at which they shall be served upon further action by this board. Because what ends up happening with appeals is it goes to the ABCC, and then they send it back to the board. So there's sort of two options. One is effective immediately, the other one is effective after six days, or a date in the future.
Why don't we go with a date in the future? I'm just looking at the calendar.
Because just in response to some of the public comment, I just wanted to draw folks' attention to what town council included in the letter to us, which is in the select board packet. The examples that were provided to us as a board, as to what the select board's done in the past, included the 2013 board suspension for two days for a first offense sale. And then in 2014, the board apparently opposed a 90-day suspension for a second and third offense sale that was disapproved by the ABCC, finding the penalty to be unreasonable, and instead recommended the licensee serve 50 days with 40 days to be held in abeyance for two years. So that's what the board has before us in terms of what, what the select board's done historically.
But that doesn't go into when it's to be served?
Correct.
Right, so with Ricky's Liquor, which was the second and third offense, those were effective immediately, and the licensee went to court to try to get a stay on that, and they were unsuccessful. Ricky's Liquor is a little bit different than the situation presented here. They had a violation. While the board was holding that hearing, the second and third offense occurred. So within a month, within a month period, all three offenses had occurred.
Wow.
And just some additional background.
All right, so that's, that's definitely different than what we're dealing with now.
Yes.
All right. It is now August 27. Might I recommend that the three days be served September 23rd, 24th, and 25th? It's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
So I'm going to suggest that we don't use a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, because those are the probably the required stays of the week. And I don't think that's the right message.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we just do it immediately?
It gets delayed if he appeals.
Okay, good. Let him appeal. That's what he wants to do. If he doesn't, if he wins, then, you know, it happens according to the way that ABCC finds. If he doesn't, he starts the suspension.
Thoughts?
That's, I just find, yeah, I agree with John.
So Jari, just to clarify, if it's effective upon the notice, immediately upon the notice, so tomorrow or the next day?
Yeah.
If he chooses to appeal, he would have to go to court to get the stay. So it would mean an immediate action on his behalf to go to court. We would obviously have to go to court to defend that, and then the appeal would happen at a later date. The ABCC takes.
Let's not incur more litigation, sort of more legal fees here. If we do it for a set date in the future, regardless of what those dates may be, we spare ourselves our town council's court appearance.
So?
That's likely so, yes.
I see. That's good to know.
Bob?
Just for town council, if we serve the owner tomorrow, when does it start? The next day?
Whatever date is voted on by the board. So I think that's what they're discussing now. If you serve him tomorrow, and the board votes to establish the suspension at the end of September, then he just has notice tomorrow that he has to turn in.
If it's just to be served as soon as possible, and we deliver it tomorrow, does it start the next day? Because they have to come in and bring their license to us.
Exactly.
And we have to be open for that to happen, and there's a long weekend coming up.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see. They can bring it to the press department.
Okay.
So if you would prefer to go with a weekend, might I suggest Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the last weekend in September? Is that, has everyone amended to that?
Yeah, that sounds fine with me.
Great. From a motion perspective, now comes the fun part.
So the one question is, did we say the immediate, or?
I would.
We just said, let's.
I would say postpone it to a separate. Because otherwise, we'll stay with the whole court. All right. So the first one, we're going with a two day to be held in abeyance for three years.
Or would it commence? The first one?
Say that again?
The language is.
So it's the first one here?
To commence immediately or upon receipt of notice of decision, or such other days the board may desire on the first offense. It's going to be in abeyance.
So I would say commence, commence September 26?
Use a date for both?
Yes.
Okay. I think I can do it.
Okay.
Let's try it.
It's September 26, you said?
September 26. It is a Thursday.
And these are the two that are going to be held in abeyance?
Yes, that's the first motion.
Yeah, that's why. You've got two sets of dates conflicting with each other. Don't you? Can you have each of them be the same date as the start or overlap?
Yeah, you can, because these are being held in abeyance. Yeah, exactly. So the only other question, so the way that the motion is drafted here is that it gives them the opportunity, if they appeal, then everything's stayed until the termination of that appeal. It's up to the board whether they want to include that language or not. So if the board wants to include it, you would include the part that's identified as subpart B in your motion. If you don't want to give them that opportunity, you can just end it at the end of subpart
Repeat that part as far as part B is concerned for me?
So the way that this was drafted was if the licensee decides to appeal, that it would have an automatic stay of the suspension until the ABCC has held the hearing and referred the matter back to the board, and the board issues its final decision. With abeyances, that would mean if the licensee was to violate again while this was being appealed and stayed, that it wouldn't necessarily count, as they wouldn't automatically trigger the service of those days that are held in abeyance. You'd have to wait until the ABCC appeal has been.
Oh, I see.
I see. But I thought that if we did it to a date in the future, both the abeyance and the actual days.
Yeah.
That would reduce the likelihood of us incurring more legal costs.
A hundred. It would, because we would know, if you do it a date in the future, we would know whether he's appealing, and if he makes a request of the board, he can come back to the board and ask that you stay it, instead of having to immediately run to court tomorrow or Monday to get an emergency stay.
So B gives us more flexibility?
It does.
All right, so I would be inclined to include section B as part of the motion. Thoughts? Objections? No? Okay. So Mark, then we have, so we're reading the first one here. It's a two-day suspension held in abeyance for three years commencing September 26, and we are reading part B.
Instead of or, it's and.
Yes.
No, it should be or.
It should be or?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes, because if he appeals, A gets held.
Okay, let's try the first motion. All right. Move that the board impose a two-day suspension to be held in abeyance for three years for the violation on May 18 to be served commencing on September 26, 2019, or if this decision is appealed to the Alcohol and Beverage Discontrol Commission upon issuance of any further order from the select board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. So in favor, we are, you are supporting the two days, the two-day suspension to be held in abeyance for three years, and the three-day suspension to commence September 26, pending any appeals? All those in favor? Opposed. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
The second motion.
Oh, damn.
Okay. Move that the board impose a three-day suspension for the violation on May 31, 2019, to be served commencing on September 26, 2019, or if this decision is appealed to the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission upon the issuance of any further order from the select board. Is that right?
That's correct. Excellent. Is there a second?
A second there.
All those in favor? Opposed. Okay, motion carries. We have already voted on the select for policy. This matter is now closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess before we commence with the next agenda Session. So, before we move on to the next one, we have numerous items still remaining on our agenda. Bob, I wanted to confirm with you the priority of these that we have in front of us. We have Austin Prep, the Monitoring Agent, previewing the warrant for November Town Meeting, the ad hoc restructuring, and the gas leak petition. And then we have Executive Session. So, of those, I assume that the Austin Prep and the Monitoring Agent are necessary to accomplish tonight, given the audience that we have recently acquired.
I would assume the Monitoring Agent is only going to take two minutes of your time, and Austin Prep, a little bit more.
Okay.
Previewing the warrant, you're scheduled to vote on it on your next meeting to close it, so I suggest you preview it. Whether you want to be satisfied with what you saw in the packet or hear from me, it's up to you.
In your estimation?
No.
Not for my...
And I think that if the board agrees with our solution, I have to be a quick vote.
So let's open that and see if we can close that one quickly. If not, we'll perhaps set that aside. I would like to touch on the gas leak one. That should hopefully be a quick one as well. Alright, so let's... So we have to hit everything? A lot of them are all on the same page.
But they're all quick, John. They've all been quick so far, so...
Right, very efficient.
Every reason to believe they'll be quick going forward.
Alright, Bob, over to you for Austin Prep.
Thank you. I'll soon introduce Headmaster Jim Hickey. Jim's been here for about six years. One of the first things he did when he came to town was pay me a visit and say he wanted to be a good neighbor. And I really appreciated that because he wasn't asking for anything. And that relationship has continued. Austin Prep has been, what we called years ago with Select Board goals, a really good community partner. They've helped us in many ways. We had a problem at Barrow School. We were allowed to bring all of Barrow. We had an active shooter drill. Tell you that I really appreciate the relationship that's built up. One of you today is a request, but it's also a mutual benefit. Prep is undertaking what I call a three-phase. What Bowfield has completed. The second one has gone through a process this summer through CPDC. They're approved and Conscom could potentially approve it at their next meeting. Not to say that I know what they will do. And that in the process of going through the second phase, we identified what is really a mutual opportunity to have them have a better project in Conscom eyes and have us fix some stormwater problems that we identified as our worst in town. So Willow floods occasionally and we have to close it. And that's kind of a bad street to close because there's no easy cut through somewhere else that's nearby. So when we realized we had the opportunity, you know, we were very, very interested and have had a discussion since, I believe it's March. What's in front of the board for approval is a draft memo of understanding. The work involved in this project is technical and complex, and the path forward on it is still not 100% certain. But the memo itself is actually quite simple. If you will, and certainly Council can add to this, it allows the town to work on private property. There's two potential areas that we want to work on. One is what is described as an undersized culvert, which is near the field they're proposing to work on. And then the other is drainage ditches, some of which is on Austin Prep's land and some of it is on our land. But we need to get permission from the board to be on that land to be doing work. And that's what this agreement, in a sense, in its essence, does. So at that point, I'd like to turn it over to the Headmaster. Jim Hickey just wants to walk you through his project.
Bob, before we take that step, I have a question as far as the private land.
Yeah.
You mentioned part of it is Austin Prep and part of it is the town. Is that for both sections that you are referring to?
The both sections is only for drainage ditches. The culvert itself is only on Austin Prep land.
Thank you.
I've read the... Well, I've gone through the plan. And I don't necessarily need, nothing against you, but given the late hour, I don't need to hear a presentation on the project to approve Wortman private land. I mean, what's the downside? Is there liability or something like that that we incur? Right?
Well, you, under this agreement, you have, you're being given permission to work on private land.
Yeah.
The whole, the potential municipal liability as a result of something going wrong with this project probably doesn't depend on whether it happened on public land or private land. If you cause damage downstream, it's not going to, it's not going to matter whether what you did happened on or off.
Right.
Really, I don't think that that's relevant to your consideration. It's just that you want to make sure that you have in place an agreement so that when you go on private land, you're not trespassing.
Yeah. I don't know if it necessarily was just like, given the time that we have left, it's only, still, it's only 4:30.
I think it was an actual observation. Thank you, Andy. So, Bob, are you, as town manager, comfortable with this agreement?
Yes.
There was a memo from Ryan as well.
Right, yes, we are.
There's a mutual agreement. Everyone's on board?
Yep.
I'm seeing that.
Couple of quick questions, though. So in the agreement, well, two questions. One is, how much of, what is the town planning to be putting into the project?
So far, the town has put in $10,000 to $15,000 to do some study work upfront. There's an additional potential of $50,000 in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund as drainage money. Beyond that, we would have to ask someone for money. So if you will, and by the way, the work is not imminent. We don't know when it's going to be, but it doesn't have to be in the next few months. That's a different part of their project. So this could be a couple of years as a process. I'm imagining that it's possible that we will go to a town meeting and ask for a bigger amount of money if we determine that it's a bigger problem, not just on Austin Prep land. Otherwise, we'd be limited by the $50,000. So one way or the other, the town meeting would be involved.
And the amount that Austin Prep is suggesting in here, I think, is $75,000 between permits and a few other activities?
That would be for materials and for labor for what we do. They may effectively pay back up to that amount.
Got it. Okay, at this point, from what we know...
Yeah, I'm comfortable that the $75,000 would take care of the culvert, certainly.
Thank you.
John?
In reviewing the document extensively, it's kind of a win around the table. I mean, you know, the town binds itself. The agreement itself just gives the town permission. But the, if you think about it in a holistic way, it's a real opportunity to partner with a private enterprise here. Happens to be an educational enterprise. And, you know, they improve their offering to their students. And we have the opportunity to really help the neighborhood in a big way. That particular Willow Street area, when it goes bad, it's awful. And, you know, the idea that this, you know, this kind of collaboration, I just think we need to move on it and hope they get going soon, so...
I'm in agreement, and especially given the time, I'm comfortable moving forward with the motion to approve the memo of understanding between town and Austin Prep, unless there are any questions for Town Council or the Headmaster or Bob.
Very small point I just noticed in the draft MOU. It lists only one of my two middle initials, so we may want to have DJ. That's all. That's my name on the voter rolls, too. So to keep it all...
And DJ Landry.
Spin those records, DJ.
Can I do the motion as...
Please read the motion.
So, move to approve the memo of understanding between the town and Austin Prepatory School as amended with ends.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
We're going to ask the board to sign three copies and also the Headmaster. Caitlin, you can just handwrite in the other initials.
I can also do that.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thanks.
Really, I mean, I've been to it. It is an excellent presentation.
Should we put the photo up while we're signing?
Yes. That's a great idea.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
It's really a...
Steal away. Alright, so while we are signing, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is we are voting to approve a Monitoring Agent for 475 Main Street, supporting our project. Bob, is there further explanation?
This is the third one you've been asked to do in the last few months. It's fairly routine. This is an agent who works in town already. And you saw a memo from Julie Mercier saying the support very much, staff very much supports this. And I have no concerns.
Okay, so there is a motion?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Do we get a second to that motion?
We haven't heard of that motion yet. Just didn't know if there was any questions.
I think we covered this at our last meeting. We pointed an agent to one of the other projects. It's pretty standard.
Alright, so Mark, can you read the motion?
Move to approve Metro West Collaborative Development, Inc. As the Affordable Housing Monitoring Agent for the 40R project at 475, formerly known as 467 Main Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Alright.
Thanks very much, guys.
Yep.
Thank you very much, John.
Project is really looking good.
Thank you very much. We're excited to get it open.
How soon?
Probably end of February.
Fabulous. Fantastic.
Any tenants?
We're looking around right now. We're just starting a marketing campaign. Hopefully, it's going to be... Thank you very much.
Alright, next up, we will be previewing the warrant for November Town Meeting. Bob, back to you.
First three articles are conventional by charter. I do want to mention that the RMLT, what is she, general manager, I guess, it's late, requested, and we've not yet confirmed with the moderator that she'd like to change to April, just because they changed their fiscal year and she'll have full financials in April to reflect on. She would not have them in November. Let's see. The fourth article is also a tradition, current year budget changes. There are many. I'll go over those on September 11th. There is at least one prior year bill. I'm not sure yet if we have surplus materials. Because the policy recently changed, we definitely have surplus materials. I don't know if they meet the hurdle of town meeting action, so that's tentative. Another tentative one, I don't think this will happen, but we thought it was good to have the article on. For a lot of the 40R projects, there are state payments. In case by November, we get one of those payments, this would allow us to move it right into the stabilization fund. We have done it in the past years after the fiscal year closed, so it's not essential that we catch it quickly, but it seems like a good planning tool. There are a couple of debt rescissions to make, notably the $900,000 that remain on the Birch Meadow Field lighting. Sorry, Bill. Retirement Board has... We all are, Bill. Retirement Board has asked to bring this article back. They had it a couple of years ago. They deferred it because of our override situation. They want to increase the COLA for the retirement situation. I will show the board that even without this, retirement pension costs next year are going to go up at least 20%, possibly 25, with, if this passes. It's not an insignificant amount. It's $800,000 or $900,000, but I think we've got it handled within the budget for FY '21. Because the town recently had to hire itself an affordable housing monitoring agent because it was not at the start of one of these projects, but rather in the middle or well after, and sadly, the prior one had passed away, we could only procure the services of someone for three years and found it was not particularly advantageous for getting a lot of applicants. So this would allow this to happen for longer than three years. Similar vein, DPW. Over the next six months, we'll need to go up bid for a rubbish disposal contract. The market right now is either five- or 10-year contracts. 10 is not easy. But we'd like permission for greater than three years, and we'll probably ask for 10 years. And we've done that in the past, and it's been very successful.
Bob, didn't we just do this a year or two?
There's two components. One is recycling and one is rubbish, so it's two different parts. Right, they're not coincidental. You're well aware of the senior tax relief home rule petition. CPDC has four zoning amendments, which I'll skip right over happily. And there's a petitioned article from possibly someone in this room and others to rename a softball field in the Birch Meadow complex. That's the warrant. It's two or three nights, and then the board can decide later whether there's a separate article on the natural gas leaks or whether it is contained within one of the other budget articles. So, you know, the home rule petition for new town meeting members might take some time. The four zoning ones will probably take some time. I think the rest is fairly straightforward.
Can anything be added to this?
Certainly.
Absolutely. And what's kind of the deadline around that, Bob?
I've asked you to close it on the 10th. Technically, your deadline is the 24th, but again, I'd like to try to do it in a meeting before.
One of the things we've talked about here, and I thought that we might see it in front of Town Meeting, is a discussion about a beer and wine license, adding some beer and wine licenses for our convenience stores. I realize that in order to be able to do that, we're going to need to, you know, cross the inevitable shadow of Beacon Hill. the inevitable shadow of Beacon Hill. But, you know, it seems to me that, you know, some kind of a straw warrant, if town meeting is not going to be amenable to this, then why would we, you know, pull in a chit and go to our state reps and ask them to help us, you know, structure something for, you know, go through the House and the Senate? It just struck me that it would make more sense, and I could be way off about this, and I just don't know the right protocol for it. But if we put something out for town meeting to say this is a great idea, or this is a stupid idea, we'll never vote for it, it'll tell us where to go next. Either just let it go, or...
The non-legal answer is, I would suppose, an instructional motion might get you that information, informally. To have anything more formal, you know, I assume you'd have to do a home rule petition ultimately, I'm not sure what...
I don't know the order, is what I'm...
Yeah. Normally, it would go through this board, go through a public hearing process, and then go to town council as a request for a home rule petition language, or an article. That sound about right?
Right.
It's late to do that for November town meeting.
Okay.
In the past.
I'm just trying, right, right. We're just having a chat.
It was one of those things that we have not got back onto our agenda, because we've had a very full agenda, and...
Yeah, I don't know how it's going to sort out, but last time we did this, we did it as a special town meeting, which is always a tool that's available, which allows you a much shorter window before town meeting where you have to do these things instead of now.
Right.
So it's still possible to do it in November, it's a question of whether you want to get a sense of town meeting before you go through the whole formal process or not. And I really think the best way is an instructional motion to get the informal sense of a town meeting. But what I don't know is, will town meeting have enough in an instructional motion to understand what you're asking? Yeah, that's, I worry about that. You know, I think it needs a real presentation, you know? And let it, let the chips fall where they may, I don't know where they're gonna fall.
So, John, I'm happy to put that on a future agenda for us to discuss, if the instructional motion seems like it won't provide enough information to town meeting for November, I'm always sort of pressed for time as far as when we have to close the warrant. What we can do is discuss it amongst ourselves, ask potentially Bob to do a presentation on it, or you can do one yourself if you're so inclined, and table that for April town meeting.
Alright.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, I just don't want it to get lost in the shuffle, I, you know, it just struck me that...
Okay.
I'd be very supportive of that, too, I think that this board really should have a good hard discussion about that first before we...
I'm okay with that, I just, you know, I want to get it front and center.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at the list of things that we need to bring kind of back, that's the correspondence.
So, Bob, can we add that to our list of future agendas?
And one other thing the board has discussed, and will discuss if you're next meeting, was local roads and the Mass Dock, whether they go through a home rule petition for that, so we'll discuss that.
So, anything else on the warrant?
No.
Great. Any other questions from the board regarding the warrant?
Gas leaks.
That's coming up. So, moving on to the, so we're not voting on anything yet, correct, Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry. This was a preview.
This was just a preview.
Right. So, next up, we have a vote to restructure the ad hoc committee for human rights, so I will hand it off to Andy and Ann.
Yeah, so, Ann and I talked about this previously today. A very quick overview, which we're all familiar with already. In March, when we appointed members to the ad hoc committee, some were non-residents, two were non-residents, and that was in violation of the charter. And we were trying to deal with that, we came up with door A and door B, and you asked for door C. I subsequently rethought my door and, you know, closed it myself. So, but fortunately, someone in the ad hoc committee, I won't mention her name because I haven't asked for her permission, but she had this excellent idea of just establishing an ad hoc that consisted of five members, two from the select board, two from the school committee, and one from the Board of Library Trustees. And that the people who are currently already participating in this ad hoc would, you know, they've committed to still show up, still help us out, still provide ideas, so it's really, and it would, and they all loved this idea. And so, if we could, we also may get in a forum with you. So, if I could just read, it's a very short change of enabling language, and if the board likes it, could we vote on it tonight, and then we'd be able to get going with...
So, John, you missed the, when you stepped out, the...
I've read this, did you do more than what's on the screen right now?
No, it's just the recommendation for the change. Alright, great, you want to read it?
Just to highlight a couple of their changes, in addition to the membership, we earlier mentioned the change in the sunset date to accommodate the possibility of bringing this before April town meeting. And then the other pieces, we do, we do in the language change the mission so that it's a human rights focused organization rather than a human rights board, just to provide a little bit of flexibility as to what that will look like. And removes the language that says that the ad hoc committee would consider the recommendations made to the select board at the stakeholders' meeting. There was a feeling on, among some members of the ad hoc that that was, those recommendations really should be considered by the select board rather than having it go to the ad hoc, so. And it also feels like the work of the ad hoc in thinking through this human rights focused organization is full, there's a lot of work to be done just on that, so.
So, Andy, do you want to go ahead and read it, and if we're all in agreement, we can vote?
Yes. An ad hoc committee is hereby created to help establish a human rights focused organization. The following representatives shall be invited to participate as members in this ad...
Can I just interrupt, that's not the motion that's actually been handed out tonight? Look at the motion, because there is a couple of legal distinctions.
So, has, as a point of clarification, Bob, has town council reviewed this motion so that it is more...
He supplied.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll read this one.
So...
Oh, wait, Joe. Hey, Joe. I'm sorry?
That was a motion.
No, no, I mean, I'm happy to have Mark read the motion.
Well, it sounds like what we're doing is, correct me if I'm wrong, we're changing the members of the ad hoc, as you said, to be two members of the school committee, two members of the select board...
Yes.
Who will act as co-chairs, and a member of the Board of Library Trustees. We are also changing the sunset date from, to June 1st, 2020.
And the mission is, removes the language around considering the stakeholders, the recommendations from the stakeholders' meeting.
Is it fair to say that you've streamlined this thing so that you can move towards its ultimate goal in a little more productive and simpler way, is that, is that a fair thing to say?
And within, keep it within the charter, removes issues around residents versus non-residents.
Got it. And we name them, we name individuals.
And we name them, so that's clear.
So, I would...
I think, what I was reading was, was in the, it was, is...
From the pack.
Okay, so, Mark, then, I mean, I'm, given that, I want to be sensitive, because sorry, I love you, we still have a couple other items. Mark, can you read this full motion for the restructure? We'll take it, yeah, it's just taking us in its entirety.
Okay. Move to dissolve the ad hoc human rights committee, repeal section 2.4.1 of the select board's policies, and create an ad hoc committee to help establish a human rights focused organization as follows. An ad hoc committee is hereby created to help establish a human rights focused organization. The following representatives shall be invited to participate in members, as members, in this ad hoc committee. Two members of the school committee, two members of the select board, who shall act as co-chairs, and a member of the Board of Library Trustees. This ad hoc committee has a sunset date of June 1, 2020. Furthermore, approve the following members. Ad hoc committee members, Andrew Co-Chair, Andrew Friedman Co-Chair, Linda Snow Docser, Elaine Webb, Andrew Grimes.
Thank you, Mark. As a point of clarification, as this is including a change to our policies, are we required to have a public hearing?
So the answer is no. There's nothing in the charter, nothing in the bylaws, and nothing in your policies that says that you can only amend your policies after a public hearing. It is your usual practice to do so, but the particular provision that you're removing is the provision that set up the other ad hoc committee, so it feels like it needs to happen.
Yes, okay. Just, just one as point of clarification, one, one a town council blessing.
You need a second.
Alright, and I need a second.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Lovely.
Thank you.
Alright. Next up...
Good night, Bill.
Good night, Bill.
Night, thanks, Bill.
Alright, so, next up, we have on the agenda, this is a review of gas leak online petition requests. The background here is that some residents have asked out to Andy and myself to add this as an article to the warrant for November town meeting. There's been some general discussions, I will hand it off to Andy to introduce it a little bit more thoroughly, and then we have a member of the public who will be speaking.
Right, all I have to say is, to take off what Vanessa said, while she was away, I got together with a number of town residents at my house, including five town meeting members, and we drafted the article that will be presented before you. Whether that article is folded into the general budget, we can discuss later. But this is, this will give you some background into the problem. David.
Alright, so, David Zeig, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
And, just as a point of clarification, it is now eleven o'clock, so we're going to try and keep this one brief.
There are two things I want you to get out of this conversation, because I'm, the warrant article, it provides funding to do this independent gas leaks audit in Reading, which has been in a number, been done in a number of communities. And the first point that I want to make is that we really do still have a gas leaks problem in Reading. You know, that our gas leaks are up thirty-four percentages over the last year, that half of the new gas leaks in Reading are the grade one leaks, which are the dangerous leaks that have to be fixed immediately. And this situation, we've been tracking this since 2015 in this venue, John's been here for all of this, and it has not gotten better. This has gotten the attention of citizens in Reading, and that's caused them to come up with a petition. In the packet, it says a hundred and seventy-seven Reading signatures, it's now a hundred and eighty-eight Reading signatures. I'm not going to go through all the terrible things that natural gas does, but it's everything from the climate to wasting money and multiple forms of danger. What happened in the Merrimack Valley could have happened here, could still happen here tomorrow, there's nothing special about our setup, our setup is very much like what it is and was in the Merrimack Valley, except they got their pipes replaced now, right? And we're working on that. But it was the pipe replacement that caused the problem, so that, you know, that was what triggered the problem. So anyway, so we've got this citizen petition here, that's, there's this online petition here, it is, and you can look it up, and you can see that there's now a hundred and eighty-eight signatures of Reading residents for this, to do an audit to further address these gas leaks, and that's one issue, because, you know, thank you, Andy, and thank you, Vanessa, for, you know, being willing to sponsor this, but this was initiated as a citizen grassroots activity, and that's one point that I want you to, you to get. I don't know if you can see how well you can see this, not well.
Blow it up a little bit.
Maybe go to full screen or something.
No, just up at the percentage there, see the percentage?
A little higher on the right.
To the right, there you go. Just pump it up.
There is a full screen here thing, you're right, is there one?
I think there is.
Code of view. Page with this one, full screen. Okay. We've got three examples of towns that have done this, one of them is Weston. And the second point I want to make is that this is a phased effort, that this, that there, this goes in a couple of phases. What you're looking at in this map is a picture of a methane survey, if you will, a street survey, where a spectrometer is put into a vehicle, the vehicle drives up and down the streets, and you can see, you can see the vehicle driving up and down the streets, that's the red lines, and whenever it detects methane, it, you get a spike. Now, you get a spike either because there is a leak there, or, I mean, the size of the spike is due either to the, is primarily to the amount and the closeness of the leak. So you could have a leak on private property that doesn't register on the street, but you maybe you'll get a, you get a little shorter spike, you know? Or you could come, you could drive right over the top of a leak, like over a manhole cover or something like that, you'll get a big burst. So this, the height of these is indicative of something, but this does not tell you that there is a leak at that point, it's just, it's just information. The first phase is this driving around, just driving up and down the streets with a spectrometer that measures methane, and getting this kind of a map that tells you where the methane is in town. This effort costs something under five thousand dollars. Everybody does this first. This is what we would do first. And where you go from here depends on what you glean from this exercise, and then where what's important to the town. So, part of, the thirty-five thousand dollars that's in the article would pay for quite a bit of analysis and further steps and so forth. This, what we would actually do is something that I think we would decide after, after we did this step. That's the phase two. In case of Weston, the phase two was a full assessment of their detected gas leaks, they did, they went through and then came up with their own list of gas leaks, much as the, much as the gas company would do. Their result was that they found 292 gas leaks, you know, sixty-six percent more than National Grid said. A couple of grade ones, a hundred and sixty-three grade twos, a hundred and twenty-seven grade threes, a hundred and two leaks greater than 2,000 square feet. So, 2,000 square feet is the DPU definition of a large volume leak. There are nominally, ten percent of our leaks are large volume leaks, as you can see in Weston, a hundred and two out of 292 is not ten percent. They've found a very large number of very large leaks in Weston. That's what they did, and they spent upwards of thirty thousand dollars on this exercise. Salem, this is a different picture, that Salem has a really interesting discussion of what they did with statistics. Again, same thing, they went around and they did the survey, seventy-nine thousand data points in the survey, so that's what you're starting with. And then they looked at it in different ways. So what you, with these bubbles, what you're looking at, and you see, the larger the bubble, the more points are included and they collected together, the higher the, excuse me, the darker the color, the higher the methane concentration. This was, so they went through this whole exercise, and this is a picture of, they did a daily mapping and calibration, because the ambient methane depends on the weather, it depends on the wind, it depends on the humidity, and so every day, you kind of have to reset yourself, and that's what they did. And their website goes through all this, this is just showing leaks in Salem above the ninety-fifth percentile. So they had, what, 232 unique sites, but these were the ones that were above the ninety-fifth percentile. What they did then was, they were mostly interested in their trees. So they hired, this, you know, their next step was to spend four thousand dollars to have a bunch of tree planting sites surveyed. They were planning to plant 220 new trees, they asked them to go survey each of the locations where they were going to plant, they found that 26 of them were, you know, contaminated, where gas leaks, so they did not plant the trees in those locations until they, you know, fixed the leaks, and they figured they saved twenty-two thousand dollars because of that. So they are saving trees. Wellesley, this is kind of a blow up of a part of Wellesley. So Wellesley did this, too. Now here you can see the little dots, all the little dots are the data points of this vehicle driving around during the survey that I talked to. that I talked to. The diamonds are the, I mean, excuse me, the triangles are the, are the gas leak locations as reported by National Grid. Some overlap, some not so much. All of the, all of the green dots are the lowest level here, but at two parts per million, that is more than what is supposed to be the assumed ambient for methane. So it's leaking everywhere. Wellesley is kind of a mess, actually, but they, they've got leaks everywhere, but some are worse than others, right? So that's what they were trying to do. Now, their plan is to take this data, and their DPW is using this in their discussion with National Grid about road repairs, so how they're going to do it. So they have more information than the triangles about where, you know, where there is a gas to be, to be worked on before they start paving roads and closing them up. So this is another approach. So that's kind of it. I mean, so we, I think that the way this would play out is we would do the survey, we would see what the results of the survey were, and we would just decide what we wanted to do from there. The money and the, from the article provides would provide for those next steps. I think this is the kind of thing where we would want to have a group of stakeholders in the town, you know, DPW, yes, fire department, perhaps, you know, our tree, our tree warden. I mean, everybody who has a stake in what's happening with the gas leaks should be involved in deciding what we would want to do further.
Is that how it's been handled by other towns? Do we know?
No, not necessarily. They could do it, I mean, Weston, I believe, went for the, for the gas leaks analysis from the beginning.
Okay.
It was pushed by a sustainability group in Weston. So all this says is these are different ways that we could, that we could use the information.
So does that indicate at the very bottom of that page, that our DPW then steps into the role of repair and maintenance?
No, not at all. It just means that they know where the gas leaks are. So when they talk to National Grid about, when they coordinate repairs with roads, road work, that they have better information than what National Grid has provided.
Is the idea here to position us that if National Grid doesn't act on our, on our work, to sue them for cause? Because, you know, they know where the leaks are.
No, they don't.
Well, they, they know there's a lot of leaks that they, you know, as you pointed out, we've been talking about this together here for several years.
Right.
And there was many, many leaks. And, you know, it doesn't sound like progress is being made.
No, it's absolutely not being.
I mean, they're not doing anything.
But that's, that was the point of this, this picture in Wellesley. The National Grid leaks are the triangles.
Yep.
And then all the dots on all the roads are showing you where there's, where there's methane coming out. They're not, they are not, they are reporting leaks that have been called in by somebody. You know, if you call 911, or you call National Grid, it'll go into their database. They are not, you know.
I get, I get that they're not reporting themselves, and they're not.
Well, they do a survey themselves too, but, but they are not, but they're coming up with answers that are 50 percent of what's actually out there.
So by doing this, and I'm not opposed to this in any way, I actually think it's a great idea. What does it get us? I mean, what's the end game, I guess, is what I'm looking for? Because National Grid has demonstrated now over many years, an unwillingness to fix their broken stuff. Right? Or wrong?
Well, let's, let's run a little bit.
So this, I don't, this could get to be a long answer. Let me try. We are pushing the DPU to update the regulations. So addressing the large leaks, you know, address, and is part of that. You know, the latest regulation requires all of the utilities to fix every grade three leak that existed in January 2018 within eight years. I don't think that's going to happen, but they, but in order for them to do what you just said, just blow it off, they're going to have to, they're going to get right into it with, with the regulatory agency.
So we're fortifying a position we took four or five years ago.
Yes, yes.
Which is what we're trying.
And we didn't have any leverage there to speak up, but we, but one of the things that we did, and when this, and when Reading endorsed, you know, a couple of gas leaks bills, that was, that, not just Reading, but that all the towns that did that got the attention in the legislature, and that caused them to pass a couple of really good laws that addressed the larger leaks.
And this just amps that up that much.
It does. So it's, you know, information.
Just trying to, just truly trying to understand the end game here.
And I don't know, and while I believe there, that the people who did the petition would probably tell you that they, what they have in mind is doing our own gas leaks map, I would say, let's, let's do the first phase and then see if that's, if that's where we want to end up.
And this could, this could, David, this could also find grade one leaks that are a safety hazard and that they would have to fix right away.
Well, yeah, I mean, typically what happens when they do this survey, if they run across a grade one leak, they stop the car and call it in.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, you know.
Thank you, Dave, for that. Bob, do you have thoughts on?
I was just reading the article. I think the article is pretty straightforward, and can be done in the time period that you need. Obviously, the presentation at town meeting is complex, but I think that maybe to John's point is, what do we do at different stages and who gets to decide is pretty important. Ray, correct me, I don't think that has to be in the language.
No, this is just, this is just appropriate money.
Right, right.
Doesn't, I mean, someone might ask you.
Somebody's going to ask you that question.
But in terms of them closing the warrant in a couple of weeks, that's.
It's more or less exactly what you mean.
So there's, there's two items then that I'd like to discuss. One, I mean, this was brought to Andy and myself as a separate article, to be included in town warrant. However, the amount, which my understanding is 35,000?
Up to.
Up to?
Yeah.
Okay. May not necessarily, no pun intended, warrant its own article, when it can be incorporated into Article Four.
Correct.
So I appreciate that this was brought forward to us. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. From a practical perspective, I would fold it into Article Four. Mark, I don't know where you would weigh in or am. I think, and I would be curious, Bob, from where you sit, because let's face facts, you're the one that would be essentially asked with collaborating with, or implementing whatever measures are necessary.
But there would be an expert in here that we would hire.
Yes.
That would help us along, so we're not just.
I hope so.
So is the we going to be Director of DPW?
I think that needs to be described at town meeting.
Well, and this is where I want to make sure we're clear on who owns this. We can appropriate the funds, or ask for the funds to be appropriated, but that Bob, you, or Jane, or whoever would be tasked are, would be on board with this project or effort.
Yeah, the advantage of having this as a standalone is everyone can understand exactly what it is. I was concerned early on in this that there'd be some risk in funding it if free cash wasn't available. Sharon assures me that I shouldn't worry, but I can't help it. If it isn't available, the very last round of defense is you use a stabilization fund, but that requires a two-thirds vote instead of just a majority, just to be clear. I think there's other ways to fund it. If it's rolled into Article Four, it doesn't draw as much attention to itself, either in a positive or negative way. But normally, our Article Four votes do not go into this kind of detail for each item. It's just fund these things, and they're very easily described.
I think it would be a great error not to put a light on it.
I don't see any reason why this language couldn't be rolled into the motion of Article Four, but it's not traditional.
Okay. I'm fine with either way. It seemed to, we're talking about $3 million, if we differ, we're talking about 35,000. I'm fine.
I don't think it's the issue of the amount of money. I think it's the issue of what's the activity and the importance of doing it. So I wouldn't have a problem if it's in Article Four, but this is a specific line item in Article Four, or have it be its own article.
I think if we're wanting to include this type of language, it needs to be its own article. Otherwise, it's supposed to slow down the process for Article Four.
And it opens, it lets people know, A, what's going on, the reality of what's going on, and B, that we're taking a stand to do something about it. You know, because it's local. This is local.
I see advantages to both.
That said, Ray, what, once we own this information as a town, have we opened ourselves up to some kind of liability?
Because we've commissioned a study that identified problems.
And now we know that there are level one problems.
Well, so, no, I would say, the general answer is no. If we identify grade one leaks, I suppose, and then we did nothing with that information, that might be a problem, but even then, it, even then, it's not our pipes that are leaking, so I don't think that that's a problem. You know, I think there, you know, there's potential for lots of pushback. With, you know, it's not like you're going to take this information, you're going to hand it to National Grid, and they're going to say, thank you very much, we had no idea.
We'll be there tomorrow.
So they'll take care of all of these right away. That's not really probably what's likely to happen. So, you know, right out of the box, there probably, you can probably expect that National Grid will have issues with the methodology that we used, and the, and, you know, the equipment that we used and whatever. So we need to be thinking about, when we're hiring somebody, that we make sure that we've got, you know, a credible expert who's using accepted technologies, so that if we have to go to the DPU and say, this leak that they're saying is grade three, where we think it's really grade one, that the DPU is going to listen to that. I don't want to, if we can avoid it, I think we don't want to get into the business that we're directly ordering National Grid to do something, because they'll immediately go to the DPU and try to, you know, overturn what we do, and we'll get into a big legal battle, whatever. So to the extent that we can, we can use credibility as opposed to legal force to induce National Grid to do the right thing, that's what, that's where I would like to start. I mean, anybody who takes a look at, you know, what's going on in my office knows that we're spending more time battling natural gas companies than pretty much anybody else. So, you know, if we have to, we'll do it, but that's not where you want to start. You want to start by having credible information that you present, and hopefully you encourage National Grid to do the right thing about it. And the idea of having a program that's tied to road repairs that are happening anyway, that if you're going to dig up the road, now's the time to deal with, deal with this, you know, that's a sensible approach.
So from next steps perspective, Andy and I have been asked to sponsor this. We've agreed.
Right.
I think there's agreement along the board that this should be its own article. Ray, have you reviewed this language for potential inclusion in the warrant?
No, but I'm happy to.
Okay. So as far as next steps then, Bob, can you please send this to Ray for his review, and when we vote on the town warrant, it does, not on the not, September 9th?
10th.
10th?
Yeah.
On September 10th, then we will have this included as part of the warrant.
I would like to see someone have responsibility in town staff for implementing as part of the article. Because right now, it's the town will, and it's not clear to me what that means. I wouldn't cut money.
The town will appropriate, it will vote to raise funds and appropriate. Yeah, the idea, I think, is to have the expert then work with.
Town staff.
Town staff, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to get too specific on that, Bob. Feel free to jump in here.
Yeah, I mean, certainly that authorization's under the direction of the town manager, because it's an amount for procurement law that has to be made. It's when you can sort of do what you want. I do think you want to be a little careful that you decide something upfront that doesn't work out down the road. So I can work with Ray on trying to make this more specific if it's sensible, and then maybe give you some options on the town.
I'll just take that approach.
If you're comfortable without the specific, I'll back away.
Yeah, I'm not really sure operationally how this will work. I understand, I understand that DPW already does this with National Grid on leaks they agree that they know about. I don't think this is really changing anything, other than it's changing what National Grid knows about.
Well, and it gives us, it gives us information when talking and negotiating with National Grid.
Right. Now, if, I don't want to belabor this, but if it gets into the operations of DPW and how they do work, that's different.
No, I wouldn't want to go down that path.
Don't pave that road, because there's a gas leak they won't repair. You know, plant a tree there, might not do that anyways, but that's, that's why the article itself, I think, is pretty straightforward. It's what do we do that's a little more complicated.
I feel like once it gets down into the nitty gritty of how it is implemented, in that sense, I would be inclined to give that authority over to the town staff. I mean, they're the ones that are familiar with the roads and.
Yeah, but I think to David's point, who gets to decide, you get an initial chunk of information, who gets to decide what to do next is pretty important. Not for the, I don't think for the language, but just for the town meeting presentation.
I mean, I think I'd be interested, the way I would see it unfolding is, we conduct the first assessment, we see what the report is, you and DPW staff and engineers take a look at it, and then.
You could come back to the board.
You can make a presentation to us, but I would imagine that based on what comes back, it would provide you, you would be, you and the staff would be much more, would be in a better position to determine what to do with it from there. We could certainly opine, but.
Yeah, I'll think about that.
I mean, we could have it as, you know, we could put it forward for a presentation in the future, and presumably present at town meeting on the status, but.
Right.
I don't want to get into the habit of us telling engineering what to do.
No, but I think there's, there's a couple of advantages to this that haven't been stressed. One is that it provides not just us and town staff with information in communicating and working with National Grid, but it also provides residents of knowledge of where there are gas leaks in town, including on town properties such as school properties. And I think that's, that's a benefit to the town, the townspeople. So they're aware with, I mean, this natural gas, we've always thought of as the clean energy. It's not.
I'm going to cut you off, Andy.
My only area of concern is when you get onto private property, which this does, I don't think it's appropriate that town staff get in the middle of that. They really don't have a role. It's the private homeowner and National Grid.
Well, this sounds, I mean, they're on the road, so they're on the.
That's different.
But this, and part of that is, is there's a word extent, and then in the next sentence, the word extends, and I, I'm a little unclear as to, as to, so, so a natural gas leak usually occurs in a specific spot in a, in a pipe.
So we're going to.
And when you talk about extends, I think they're referring to, to the geographic area where, where the leak has, has dissipated to. And, and so that's not, so a leak could be on private property and extend onto the public, onto public property, or the, by the way, a leak could be in.
So we will leave the language in your capable hands, and we look forward to that at our next meeting.
Thank you. I'm so glad.
All right, if there, there's no vote here.
So how do we put on the warrant?
It'll come next time.
It'll be put on the warrant. Andy and I have sponsored.
But we'll assume it, we'll assume it is a separate article.
Yes, please. Wonderful.
We'll fold the language.
And if I, if Ray, we could have some discussions about that, so if I could answer any questions as to where the, so the grassroots group was trying to go with this.
Why don't we take that offline? So I'm going to close this item. Let's, given that it is 11:30 and we still have to go into executive session, I'm going to suggest we table future agendas and minutes approval. Everyone's amenable to that?
Yes.
Great. So do we have a motion, Mark, to adjourn to executive session?
Move to enter into executive session under purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to duress of the town of Reading at all. As the chair has declared, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. To invite town council into the executive session and not to return to.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David. Sorry.
And not to return to open session. Roll call vote required.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Andy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Vanessa? Yes. John?
Yes.
And, great. Motion carries.